All right, good evening. I'll call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. This is the meeting of the Kattati City Council on the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. We'll start with a roll call.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lemus?
Here.
Mayor Ford?
Here. And before we continue with our agenda, we have two ceremonial items we do, a land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. I invite you to stand and join us if you wish.
Point of order, sir, this is not on the agenda and you're not allowed to add things to the agenda that are not on there, sir. You're out of order. You're out of order. You're disrupting the meeting. We have a clear agenda. We have a clear agenda. Now you're adding things to the agenda, sir. You cannot do that. That's illegal. A violation of the Brown Act. You know that? No, sir. I object. I object to this. It's a violation of the Brown Act. You cannot add things to the city agenda without posting them. You must post them on the agenda, sir. You're trying to do a run around the law. You're not fooling anybody, sir. You're disrupting the meeting. Please stick to city business. Please, sir. Please stick to city business. Please, sir. Please don't talk down to me, sir. If you can't handle the job, please hand it off to the vice mayor, sir. You're out of order.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, what item on the agenda is this? Because I would like to speak on this. What number? For clarification?
We're now at public comment on non-action agenda items. So anybody wishing to speak on any item that is listed on the agenda as a non-action item is welcome to do so at this point. And I also welcome comment on ceremonial items that are not on the agenda. So now is the time. Anybody wishing to speak? Come ahead, sir.
I have a real basic question that you're having a real hard time answering. What item did we just conduct? Which item did we just address on the agenda? I don't see it. That stupid look's not going to help, sir. You violated the law. You cannot just willy-nilly add things to a city agenda on your own. You're not king of Kattati. This town follows law, California law. You know it is a blatant violation of a government code to add things onto the agenda by speaking about items that are not on the agenda. What is wrong with you? I've given you several times to cure and correct. You're embarrassing the town. You're setting us up for unwanted litigation. You think you're going to get away with this? It's silly. Tell me people to sit down and shut up when you're the one who's out of order, sir. You need to consult with the city attorney. Take a recess because you're inviting litigation. You cannot do this week in, week out. Make it up as you go along, sir. I'm here trying to help you. But you can't see it. You're too blind with your controlism and your woke-ism. You're just too blind to see. Now regarding announcements, many people now have advised and warned the city that you need to come clean regarding the code enforcement cover-up scandal that's been going on. If you have any information, then turn state's evidence and assist the authorities with their prosecution of parties that are guilty of cover-up and fraud. You should do so. There is state and federal whistleblower protection available to you. I advise you to seek it out now. Do not risk your families. Do not risk your personal finances. Do not risk your retirement. Do not risk your reputations. Now is the time. Every day, every minute, it gets worse. We've had good citizens come forward and warn you. Sit back and ignore it at your own peril. Don't say that I didn't warn you. Don't say that I didn't come here to try to stop it. Just ridiculous. You need to come clean with the authorities, cooperate, make a deal. Make a deal with the authorities. You had nothing to do with it. You went along because you felt like you had to go along until it was too late with your attempt at election interference and corruption. You obviously don't like to hear from us. Mr. Braden Egger came to you a couple months ago explaining that he's reached out to you in good faith and you will not get back to him. Lori Alderman has commented to you in person, warning you of wrongdoing by the city and the cover-up. And you guys are just implicating yourself in this. Why would you do that? Why would you risk your reputations and the city's finances? We're this close to bankruptcy anywhere, municipal insolvency. How can you look yourself in the mirror and call yourselves city leaders when you jeopardize our city in this fashion? You know there's been obvious wrongdoing, cover-up, selective enforcement, retaliation for my previous two lawsuits. Yet you sit there and motionless, looking down at your phones, looking away. You're not going to be able to avoid responsibility here and accountability. Work with the authorities. Thank you.
Anyone else to comment on non-action agenda items? Okay, let's check with Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. Lori, you have the floor.
Hi. First, I'd like to say that I don't like this all being at the top of the list. None of us asked for it to be at the top of the list. We can't speak on things like the city manager's report or anything. We have to speak before when we don't know what the heck you guys said. Future agenda items, of course, we need weed abatement and senior citizens. We also need Brown Act training for all of you and how to avoid litigation. And because you've got so many lawsuits going on, you're keeping George at the administrative level. You need to learn how to avoid lawsuits and work with people. Your attorneys are totally out of whack, going after the whistleblowers, going after me and going after the other whistleblower, Braden. Instead of recting and querying everything, they're digging in deeper and putting you guys all at jeopardy. George is supposedly flying a plane over Kattati, according to one of the attorneys, to spy on us. It's gotten ridiculous and they have put you all in such horrible position between hard and rock place. Yes, you don't want to... You're using tax dollars at the administrative level. You're using tax dollars. Kattati citizens, that could be money that could be used for senior center, all this. But you are using them to go after George Barrick. And there's also a financial scandal that I whistleblowed on and nobody's done it. One of the attorneys is paying the judge more money than he's being reimbursed by the city by, by $28,000. And that was as of February, and you have done nothing to that scandal. We don't know how much has been incurred since February, but you can't... They were going to fine George the amount of the billings for George. It didn't matter what the violations were. It was the billings that Robert Smith did, divided by five or something. Not on how many days he supposedly human-habitated in a trailer. This is a scandal and you guys need to put it on the agenda. You need to come clean. And any of you want to save yourselves, it's going to authorities. It's gone. You have waited and done nothing now with me telling you for 20 months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further hands, Mayor Ford. That will end public comment.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item three, approval of minutes. Oh, I did want to make one response to just make it clear. I'm not making up anything as I go along. I'm enacting the current city council rules which were adopted by the council. I had plenty of opportunity for comment at the point at which those rules were adopted. Move on to agenda item number three, approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. There are three sets of minutes, one from the special meeting on April 15th and the regular meetings of May 13th and May 27th. Before we go to public comment, did we have any changes that were noted by staff or council? Okay, we'll open this for public comment. Let's start with Zoom this time.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, please use that raise hand icon to make a public comment. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Hi. Once again, you need to correct the minutes to show that there was objections made by citizens to the land acknowledgement and all that. And all three of them, you shouldn't pass all of them because all three meetings had need to be corrected to show the objections. Thank you.
That will end the Zoom portion of public comment, Mayor Ford.
Okay, anybody in the chambers wishing to comment on the minutes? Okay, not seeing anybody. We'll close public comment and come back for a motion and approval.
Move to approve the three minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that carries five to nothing. Thank you. And now on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council may consider the item. If the city council considers the item, citizens will be afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. However, the Brown Act prohibits the city council from taking action or considering any item that is not on this agenda to ensure that other members of the community who wish to provide comment are notified in advance through a properly noticed meeting agenda. B, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.gov. C, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to enroll with Civic Ready by signing up on the city's website, kattatycity.gov, under the "How Do I?" link at the top of the homepage. D, have you noticed a streetlight pothole or issues in a city park? We want to keep Kattati beautiful and running smoothly, so please let us know what needs to be fixed by going to the city website under "How Do I?" and "Report a Service Request." And finally, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatycity.gov. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Civic Ready. So we're on to item...
I'd like to speak on this matter, sir. It's on the agenda. My California law must be open for public comment.
It was open for public comment under non-action agenda items.
No, sir. That's a completely different action item, sir.
You are disrupting the meeting again. You are disrupting the meeting again.
It's a different purpose. We are now on announcements.
Sir, please stop disrupting the meeting. You did speak on the announcements. You even...
No, sir. You cannot combine all the public comments into one agenda item for the night.
The Brown Act says nothing about four minutes on every item.
I'd like to speak on announcements as I have every council meeting for months.
You have not, and that is not a...
Sir, you're violating my rights. I'd like to speak on announcements.
You are disrupting the meeting. Please be seated.
Somehow you want to get home by seven o'clock. Okay, we've been over this.
The one shouting over the speaker is the one doing the disrupting.
...public comment before or during the deliberation of the item. I've been speaking on it for months, sir.
You have not spoken at every meeting on announcements except under...
The record is very clear on all your meetings.
Comment on non-action agenda items.
You can't be speaking at all. Okay, that's how fraudulent your minutes are.
The minutes do reflect when you offer a public comment.
Now come forward and speak on this agenda item.
Because we have other work to do and you are clearly intent on disrupting the meeting until I give you terms.
You're violating my rights and heading us towards federal litigation. So which is it? Do I get to speak on this matter or not?
Not if you keep yelling over me. Because you are intent on disrupting this meeting until...
You are intent...
Because you are disrupting the meeting.
Do you want me physically removed from the council chambers? I will hold you personally.
Please start a one-minute clock.
I wish to speak on this.
You have one minute to speak on this. Go right ahead. No, sir, there is no right in the Brown Act for... You already spoke...
Is it my race? Is it my religion? Is this some kind of anti-Semitism act you're putting on here? I do want to speak, sir. Reset the clock. You're not going to treat me like a second-class citizen, sir. You're going to give me full rights...
I apologize to everybody at the meeting who is here of the council. We will need to take a five-minute recess.
Strong garden party Saturday afternoon. Better than that, we're just having a...
Okay, we're back in session. So, Mr. Barrish, because it's clear you're intent on disrupting the meeting until you have your opportunity...
There's no facts to that. Please state your opinion.
I was about to give you a chance to speak, but if you don't let me get my statement out, then you may not speak. You are clearly intent on disrupting the meeting until you get your chance to speak. And since we have business to get to, I will open a public comment on the announcements, even though it's a non-action item. So we will do our regular public comment period, so anybody else wishing to speak on the announcements is also welcome to do so. So reset the clock to the normal speaking time and you may go first.
Thank you, sir. That was a public embarrassment, what just happened. On your own agenda, under public comments, non-action items shall be limited to no more than three minutes for all non-action agenda items. I don't know if you guys can read this seven-point PICA type, but I can barely read it. But it states right in your own agenda, "I get to speak." Why would you limit me to one minute? Why would you want a jury to see you limit me to one minute? That's insane. Why would you do this to our town and characterize me as intent on disrupting? All you had to do was give me my minute or two to speak. I would have been sat down by now. But this is a power play on your part and it's gross. It's unjust. It's Stalinist, okay? You can laugh about it. Wait till all your students see this, you in action, okay? You're not a dictator here in these chambers, maybe at the university, but not here, sir. You're reading the wrong book on government. Regarding announcements now, I would like to see, why don't you tell us how one of us in the public get one of your no-bid city contracts? That's what we'd like to see in an announcement. How do we get one of those special gravy train contracts where nobody else gets to bid? Spit it out. Let us see it. Show us the job opportunities, the openings at City Hall. Make those announcements rather than the boilerplate you guys have been reading for 15 years that hasn't changed. Change it up. What are the job opportunities? Hey, make announcements on the volunteer opportunities. Wouldn't that be great? What volunteers you want? Make announcements for nominations for Citizens of the Year. Who has come forward and done all this extra volunteer work for the city, for your city departments at zero cost? How about nominating them for Citizen of the Year? Very few of us will fit that description. Maybe that's the problem. And how does someone like Robert Smith in the planning department, building department, get to get one of his friends a job in the building department? How does that happen? According to our... I have a minute and a half. Let me...
We're speaking on announcements, though, at this point.
Yeah, okay. How about making announcements how people in the building department get special jobs from their friends in the department, deeper in the department? How does that happen? We're hearing about it. It's all going to come out. Special favors? Political favors? Kickbacks of jobs for friends? Your job is to keep an eye on this. Make announcements. Bring these potential scandals to our attention so me, as a city leader, can do something about it rather than sit up there and look pretty. That's a real announcement. That's what happens when I try to help people. You don't love to hear from people. We had former code enforcement officer Braden Egger get on Zoom with you and tell you that you're not returning his calls. Make announcements to get in touch with us personally, that we'll sit down with you rather than these piles of lies that you're parading out over the public. It's embarrassing. No wonder people don't want to come here and do business in Kattati.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers wishing to comment on announcements? All right, let's check with Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Hi. I first like to agree that it is the mayor that is disrupting these meetings. If you go look at the Planning Commission and the Police Advisory, we are allowed to speak on land acknowledgement and all that. This is your issue and it's a power play. And announcements should be as... Not used this way. I'm just tired of this. Follow the laws. Listen to us and just stop this. Stop playing these power games. I'm tired of being one meeting I can speak, one meeting I can't because of whoever's in charge. That's not how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further hands on Zoom, Mayor Ford. That will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. So now we're on to item 5A, Proclamations. We have one proclamation today. A proclamation of the city council of the City of Kattati celebrating Juneteenth. Since this is, now we understand, an action item, I will invite public comment on this proclamation before reading it. So is there anybody... We'll start with Zoom. Anybody who wishes to make public comment on the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. There are no hands on Zoom, Mayor Ford.
Okay, and anybody in the chambers wishing to comment on the proclamation? Okay, not seeing any. I'll close public comment. And we have several people here today to receive today's proclamation. So representing the Sonoma State University Black Faculty Staff Association, we have Cabrina Boyd, who is in the admissions office and also the outreach coordinator for the SSU Black Student Union, if I get that right. And Flora Williams Bonner, who is in the university library and active with the Black Faculty Staff Association. And we also have, from the K-12 education world, Tina Rogers, whom we know from being here previously. And we're honored to have you both here. I think Cabrina and Tina are going to come up. So if you could come up while I read the proclamation and then you'll each have a chance to say a few words. Thank you for being here tonight. So this is a proclamation of the city council of the City of Kattati celebrating Juneteenth. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, nearly nine decades after our nation's founding and more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas finally received word that they were freed from bondage and were recognized for the first time as citizens. And whereas, black Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations across the country, building new lives and a new tradition that we honor today. And whereas, in its celebration of freedom, Juneteenth is a day that should be recognized by all Americans. And whereas, Juneteenth is a day in which we remember the moral stain and terrible toll of slavery on our country. And whereas, Juneteenth is also a day that also reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our darkest moments with purpose and resolve. And whereas, we celebrate the centuries of struggle, courage, and hope that have brought us to this time of progress and possibility. And everyday Americans who have helped make real the ideals of our founding documents for all. And whereas, on Juneteenth, we recommit ourselves to the work of equity, equality, and justice. Now therefore be proclaimed on this day of June 10th, 2025, by the city council of the City of Kattati, that we celebrate June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth. So, thank you. You're gonna go first?
Yes.
Tina Rogers, thank you.
And I would like to say good evening, the City of Qatadi, Mayor Ford, Vice Mayor Lemos, council members, city attorneys, and everybody here. And thank you. Sonoma State University. My name is Tina Rogers, and yes, as a multicultural educator that works with TK through 12th grade primarily, it's very important that we celebrate everyone's culture and the truth about history. So this is very, very important here. You know, I wanna add a little bit. In January 1st of 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed, he signed that document. And it took two years for anybody to actually recognize as the whole union in Texas to say, hey, not only is chattel slavery wrong, but, you know, low wages, taking people's property, stuff like that. June is known for not just Juneteenth. A lot of people are calling it Pride Month. A lot of you don't even know that it actually was first coined Black Music Month. Most of the people here in the United States are immigrants from a lot of places. The majority of the enslaved people are not. And I'm definitely not trying to discredit and say that people did not come from one of the 54 countries in Africa right now. But if you have millions and millions of so-called black people in America, and they came on some slave ships, I would like for the Smithsonian, Library of Congress, anybody else to start bringing up all those ships, since we like to keep things. In this country, it's the natives. We're here, Qatadi. We know the Pomo's. We know a lot of people. We do know about the Choctaws, and we know about the Cherokees, but we might not know that these people looked like us, that had brown skin. And so we wanna make sure that we bring that together. So that was like one of the first music in America. It was the indigenous music, the drums. After that, it came from the enslaved and learning more about religious, where other people study, and it had to do with the gospel music that we brought. And these are things that I actually teach to young children. And when they said, doesn't matter what you believe in, but it was like, hey, that particular person, maybe Jesus, was like kind. They're not killed, they're not still, they're like in a lot of things, but it definitely wasn't not be kind and listen to your masters. After that, the generations changed, and then you had these younger people, and they created something called blues music, because they were tired of singing about Jesus pieces. So they might go, boom, 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 boom. Teacher, teacher, boom, 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 boom. I got some really bad news. Boom, 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 boom. My dog ate my homework. Boom, 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 boom. Sound like singing the blues. Boom, 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 boom. Nowadays, my baby left me. Boom, 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 because I didn't text back. Boom, 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 boom. Need an attorney? Okay, now, and then it went from the blues to what we call country music. And everyone lived in the hills like we have here, because it was called hillbilly music. And the people from Europe, they have like a more of a natal thing, not the boom, boom. Oh, Susanna, don't you cry for me. Banjo on my knee. You get it? Sounds different. Elvis, I'm all shook up, singing like black people. That's what's country music, from the blues. There was this black man, black man that picked up these instruments, all these instruments. Kind of music is that? Jazz music. Mm-hmm. Then from there, wah, ba, ba, lu, ba, blah, ba, ba. To the fruity, woo. Rest in peace, Sly and Family Stone. Then you got rhythm and blues. What are they singing? College people, oh, sounds like rhythm blues. We'll call it, oh, we'll take a short, R&B. I know you wanna leave me, but I refuse to let you go. My girl, my girl, my girl. And now you have Beyonce and Taylor Swift, and Swift is everybody called rhythm and blues. From rock and roll, you had that man, James Brown. Play that funky music, white boy. Play that funky music, right? From that, you had funk music. You killed Dr. King, huh? Civil rights music changed. Last poets. From there, you had people that belonged to the Pride Month. Stay in the law, stay in the law. Stay in the law. Me and my wife loved to go hang out all night. Disco music changed to house music, house music. Stay in the law, house music. Then it sped up. Techno. And now, since it went to across the pond to Europe, and everybody loves EDM, electronic dance music, eh, eh, listen to your radio, it's all here in front of you. And when I teach these children, I ask them, what's next? We're all here together. What's next? They're like, what is rap music? I say, listen, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O. A to the B to C to D to E, I'm a G. You get what I'm saying? It's just a form of communication. This is American music. It's called black people music. Welcome to Black Music Month. We're celebrating Juneteenth. It's for all of us here. No pun intended. America doesn't need a black eye. My name is Tina Rogers. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening. First, give it honor to God, who's ahead of my life. I wanna thank the mayor, Vice Mayor, and for asking BFSA from Sonoma State to be a recipient for the Juneteenth proclamation.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Uh-oh.
Perfect. Thank you.
How's that? Thank you. I also wanna thank my wonderful mom who couldn't be here. She's 83. So she couldn't be here, and I wanna also acknowledge Laura from BFSA, and greetings to you all. All right, what is Juneteenth? You've heard it, and I'm just gonna repeat it, because so many people ask, what is Juneteenth? So I'm just gonna repeat what you've already heard, but I have some other things I wanna share with you, too. So what is Juneteenth? Juneteenth is a black holiday. It commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in Texas on June 19th, 1865, and is celebrated annually by black communities across the United States. In 2021, it was officially recognized as a federal holiday. Juneteenth, short for June 19th, marks the day when federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation, which had been issued two years earlier. While the Emancipation Proclamation had declared the freedom of enslaved people in Confederate states, its full implementation in Texas was delayed, with some enslaved people in the state continuing to be held in bondage. Juneteenth is a day of remembrance and celebration honoring the resilience and achievement of African-Americans, while also acknowledging the ongoing struggles for equality and justice. Celebrations often include family cookouts, faith services, musical performances, and storytelling, as well as historical reenactments and educational events. This evening, I will recite an original piece written by me, Cabrina Boyd, What Is Black Joy? Black joy is anything that inspires, supports, and uplifts black culture. Black joy also comes from within. Black joy is, in black churches, we use spiritual songs to help us express our gratitude to God and give Him thanks for all the good things He has done in our lives. We even praise Him through our trials and tribulations. I get joy when I think about how our stumbling blocks have become our stepping stones. I get joy when I think about how our setbacks have been set up for a greater comeback. I get joy when I think about who we are. Who are we? We are people of a many talents. We work hard and we strive to do our best, and we won't settle for less. We work day in and day out. We fight with all our mights. We have encountered many stumbling blocks that are now our stepping stones. We fight for what's right. We walk proud, and we don't even have to talk real loud. We are seasoned for particular reasons and conditioned with some friction. We talk about peace and love and justice and peace. We talk about unity and how we can all just get along. Let's stop judging people by the color of skin they're in. Let's focus on winning, winning the race called equality, peace, and justice. When it comes to justice and peace, I think about Trayvon Martin, Tamara Rice, Michael Brown, Philando Castile, Breonna Taylor, Sandra Bland, and George Floyd. And that's just a name of few. Lord, please comfort their families through their loss. Their bodies may be gone, but their memories are still with us. Let's keep their families in prayer, and let's continue to stand with them and others who have lost their loved ones and still waiting for justice and peace. Who are we? We are educated, dedicated, sophisticated, motivated, cultivated, and generated into powerful images that you see from day to day. In the hospitals, in media, in the music industry, in the communities, in the courtrooms, in politics, in sports, in our families. Who are we? We are grandpas and grandmas and mamas and papas and aunts and uncles and sisters and brothers and cousins and nieces and nephews. Who are we? We are judges and lawyers, doctors, musicians, actors, and teachers, and preachers and teachers. Who are we? I think about Harriet Tubman, an abolitionist politician activist. Harriet Tubman, best known as using the network of anti-slavery activists in safe houses known as the Underground Railroad. I think about Third Good Marshall, U.S. Supreme Court Justice. He said, where you see wrong or inequality or injustice, speak out, because this is your country. This is your democracy. Make it, protect it, pass it on. I think about Rosa Parks, who said, I would like to be known as a person who is concerned about freedom and equality and justice and prosperity for all people. I think about Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., a Baptist minister, activist, who had a dream that his four little children would one day live in a nation where they would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I think about John Lewis, who got into good trouble and redeemed the soul of America. John Lewis says, your vote matters. If it didn't, why would so many people keep trying to take it away? I think about our 44th president, Barack Obama, who served two terms. He said, change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. We are... I think about the First Lady, Michelle Obama, who said, be hopeful, be empowered. Empower yourself with a good education, and then get out there and use that education to build a country worthy of your boundless promise. Lead by example with hope, never fear. I think about Elijah Cummings, an American politician and civil rights activist, who said, most people are hating on you. They're not worried about where you are. They're worried about where you're going. I think about Vice President Kamala Harris, who said, my daily challenge to myself is to be a part of the solution, to be a joyful warrior in the battle to come. And I think about Maya Angelou, a poet, dancer, singer, activist, and scholar. Maya Angelou is a world-famous author who said, when someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. I think about Oprah Winfrey, an American talk show host, television producer, actress, author, philanthropist, who said, turn your wounds into wisdom and create the highest, grandest vision possible for your life, because you become what you believe. I think about Stacey Abrams, an American politician, lawyer, voting rights activist, who said, don't allow your setbacks to set you back. I think about Katanji Brown Jackson, Supreme Court Justice, who said, you can't always expect to be the smartest person in the room, but you can promise to be the hardest working. Be open to new ideas and experience, because you'll never know when someone else will have an interesting thought, or when a new door will open to take you on a journey of your dreams. And then, I think about my mama. The one I told you that was 83. She's been through a lot, and she's seen a lot. She's a survivor of brain surgery, 12 years. They told her she had five good years, and now it's been 12. So I thank God for her, and this is what she told me. Then I think about my mama, who told me to hold my head high when I walk, and don't look down. If you fall, I will help you up and brush you off. She reminds me of the scripture, Proverbs 3:5 and 6. Trust in the Lord with all thy heart, and lean not into thy own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge Him, and He shall direct thy path. And remember, we are conditioned with some friction, and we are seasoned for particular reasons. We are people of a many talents and backgrounds. That's who we are. And I get joy when I think about what He has done for all of us. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this.
Thank you both. And I'm gonna ask if you can all three come up, if you're willing for us to take a picture with you all.
Quickly, before we just do that.
It's gotta be very, very brief.
Very, 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 very. So this is the Juneteenth flag.
Oh.
Okay, so it must be this, and you do see the red, white, and blue, because we are American citizens. And I'm inviting you all to Sonoma County Juneteenth held at Old Courthouse Square this Saturday, June 14. It's family, it's fun, it's free, there's information, there's celebratory stuff going on.
Great. Do you know what time?
It's from 10 to 6.
Perfect.
It's Old Courthouse Square, so you guys, please stop by. Some of your other politicians in the county will be there, and the police chief of Sonoma walks with us, stuff like that. So a lot of people are involved. And Chris Corsi and all those guys will be there, they're usually there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So if you're willing, we'd love to take a picture.
Yes. This, thank you. Thank you so much for giving us this time. Thank you very much. Thank you all, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all. Thank you.
I have another place to go.
All right, thank you. So that brings us to Item 6, the agenda review. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
No proposed changes, Mayor.
Okay. So on to citizen business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Pursuant to city council policy, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person length for any and all items on the consent calendar. Mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. To facilitate public comment, the timer indicator lights will display yellow when there are 30 seconds remaining and red when time has expired. So I think we're going to start with Zoom for citizen business and consent calendar items.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. The firsthand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Hi. Sorry. This is what you have when you have free speech. You have a very wonderful presentations by people. And this was great, but how many? How equal is it when you don't speak? Sorry, I'm white. This city is 75% white. And you don't treat people either as equals, never mind what color everything. That's what I've been working on for years, is to have you guys treat everybody equally. And all I've gotten is, you know, I'm George Berg's lapdog, as Steve Oyn said once, you know? It's not... And I've got, I've been told like individuals, not treated as like individual with thoughts and feelings and everything. One of the things that happened in the last few weeks is the code enforcement attorney said that my supervising attorney sends me to the council meetings to disrupt the meetings. I'm not under control of anybody. I'm not, I'm not speaking anything other than my voice and my voice is the citizen of this town. You need to really examine this, having, thinking you are, respect and treat everybody equally because you don't. You go after anybody that has a differing opinion and that you don't like. And that's wrong. I had a wonderful, five years ago now, I didn't ask for a cent. And I went to federal court and we had a black judge, Judge Westmore, who loved my case because it was about social justice and changing. And it was injunctive relief. Of course, your attorneys spent $50,000 to crush it using the pandemic. But, you know, you haven't changed. You, you treat people so differently. If you're in federal court, we've told you guys so many times, judges have told you so many times, to fly right, treat everybody equal, everybody fair. This whole thing with George Barrage has gone on for two years. It's ridiculous how bad it's gotten. And you're going to cause yourself so much more trouble if you don't address it. And your silence is deafening on a lot of issues, including, you know, that we're not treated equally. We're told not to shut up, to sit down, everything if we don't agree with you. Or we're tolding, we're... This Mr. Barker wrote me a nasty one last week and I said, "Well, you know, maybe you're trying to, your negligence might be doing this." His actions, not mine. I'm tired of it. I'm a whistleblower. I have protections. I have, I brought this to you for 20 months and you've done nothing to it. And I hope that you guys can go forward with treating us all equally and fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't look like there are any further hands on Zoom, Mayor Ford.
Okay. Anybody in the chamber is wishing to make public comment on the consent calendar or have citizens' business to raise? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Ford, I would like to ask you a question. Did you do the Pledge of Allegiance or land acknowledgement? This meeting, I got here a little late, so I don't know whether you did it or not.
I don't speak during your public comment time. You're welcome to ask any questions.
I'd like an answer on that. You can give a brief comment according to the Brown Act on anything I'm saying. And I simply wanted to know because on your own agenda under announcements, it says, "However, the Brown Act prohibits the city council from taking action. We're considering any item that is not on this agenda." Now, I'm going to assume that you actually followed the law this time because you don't have the Pledge of Allegiance on the agenda. You don't have land acknowledgement on the agenda. And because I was a little late because I was over in another meeting, I don't know, but I will review your, the tape of this meeting to find out. That being said, you know, this is what I've spoken about several times now. You can't be doing things that aren't on your agenda. And as far as the speaker that continues to get up here and wants to talk about the announcements or whatever, land acknowledgement, the rest of that, I'm going to tell you one more time, 54954.3 of the government code, which is part of the Brown Act, says, "Every agenda for regular meetings shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item." Now, I see on your agenda under announcements, it doesn't say action or inaction or non-action, excuse me. But you have number two is public comment on non-action items. I would like you or your city attorney to show me in the Brown Act, where it differentiates between non-action items and action items. It says you have a right to speak on any item on the agenda if you're interested in it. The third thing I have to say is, under that same code on C, "The legislative body of a local agency shall not prohibit public criticism of the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency or of the acts or omissions of the legislative body." You've done that fairly well. I'll give you credit for that. And the final thing that I wanted to say before, I have some praise for your city attorney and the attorney's firm, is that this is where the Brown Act starts out. "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them." We're not serving you, you're serving us. "The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." Now, one of the instruments you created is code enforcement. Ms. Alderman continues to talk about it.
Please wrap up. Your time's expired.
Oh, is it already? Okay. Well, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Barker and the Redwood Law Firm for getting rid of Mr. Smith as in a conflict of interest area that he's in with this code enforcement. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. You guys need to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Anybody else, citizens in business or consent calendar? Okay. Thank you. City Attorney Barker, can I just, I'm closing public comment. Just asking you to clarify for us, make sure that reciting the pledge or land acknowledgement does not constitute council consideration of the item?
I don't, I don't believe it as an item within the content of the Brown Act. It's just simply a ceremonial practice that the council follows. It's not something that requires public comment.
Okay. Thank you. And to be clear, at this meeting, we did follow the established city council policy and recite the land acknowledgement and pledge, though it was difficult to hear. All right. So we're at the consent calendar, back to council. Are there any items that anybody wishes to pull from the consent calendar? Councilmember Savage.
Well, thank you, Mayor. On the lighting and landscaping assessment, I live in one of the districts, so I'll not be able to...
Okay, so we'll split the vote for that one. And because it's a consent calendar item, you don't need to leave the room. We'll just vote on it separately. Any items that anybody wishes to pull? And so that's item E?
Yes.
Okay. So anybody wish to make a motion to adopt items A, B, C, D, and F?
So moved. Second.
Okay. So you can vote on this one. Councilmember Savage, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? None. Okay. And then somebody wish to move to approve item E?
So moved. Second.
Okay. And to be clear, Councilmember Savage is recusing himself on this item, so he doesn't vote yes, no, or abstain. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That carries forward to nothing with Councilmember Savage recusing. Thank you. All right. We're on to agenda nine, direction on future agenda items. Any council members have items? Vice Mayor Lemus.
Yes. Last week's Sonoma Clean Power meeting, we approved the consideration for expanding service to Lake County. And so they asked if we can bring it to our city councils to talk about it. There was a feasibility study that was done several years ago that was not at the time a right time to include Lake County and Clear Lake and Lakeport. But the feasibility study that they conducted this year does show that there would be savings and no impact for all members involved. So they wanted us to bring it to city councils. I wanted to add that item. There's a feasibility study, some information from Sonoma Clean Power.
Is there a timeframe during which they want?
Well, on August 7th is when they hope to make the final acceptance of it.
Okay, so before then?
So before August 7th.
And, and is it, do they need a decision from us? Or is it feedback to you as board member?
Maybe feedback to me on the information that's provided.
Okay, great. So we've got that. We'll schedule it between now and then, which means next meeting? No, two meetings, we've got two meetings to go.
Yep, two opportunities, yeah.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. We're on to item 10, public hearings. We have one public hearing. This is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending Title 17, land use of the Kattati Municipal Code to combine the commercial industrial and general industrial zoning districts into a single zoning district. Start with a staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ford, members of the city council. My name is Autumn Boss. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. This item tonight is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to amend the industrial zoning districts in the city's land use code. Next slide, please. I'm going to start with a little bit of background. Our general plan, the city's general plan, which was adopted in 2015, has one industrial land use designation, which is known as commercial industrial. Conversely, the city's land use code, which implements the general plan, has two industrial zoning districts. Those are rather confusingly called commercial industrial and the other is general industrial. The general plan does include an action item to, for the city to combine the two zoning districts into a single district or to amend the district to allow for the full range of industrial types of uses that are contemplated by the general plan. Next slide, please. So I want to talk just a little bit more about the general plan land use designation. And this map on the slide here is the gray area up in the top. That's the northwestern part of the city. That is the commercial industrial land use, the area designated as commercial industrial land use by the general plan. And it allows for a range of commercial industrial types of uses, including industrial parks, research and development, food processing and preparation, manufacturing laboratories, and a whole range of compatible commercial uses. Next slide, please. So with the zoning districts, again, there are two of commercial industrial and general industrial. And those roughly equate to heavy industrial versus light industrial, which is typical of a city planning scheme for zoning. So our commercial industrial zone is the lighter industrial uses. General industrial would be the heavier industrial uses. That might include heavier manufacturing and assembly and things like that. Next slide, please. So this is our zoning map for the city. And get up in the northwest corner, you see the industrial districts in the darker gray and the lighter gray. So the darker gray is general industrial and that's the heavier industrial district. The light gray down below, that is the commercial industrial, which is the lighter industrial. And this, so as I say, the general plan was adopted in 2015. The zoning code predates that. And none of us who are currently in the Community Development Department know exactly why we have two different zoning districts to implement a single land use designation. But as I said before, it's very common in zoning practice. You know, it's kind of the traditional methodology to have at least two different industrial zoning districts. And that can be, you know, in cities that are much larger, that have a significant amount more industrial land than Kattati has. And you might even find more than two industrial zoning districts. The arrangement of these two zoning districts also reflects the principle of what's called feathering in zoning, in which more intensive uses, like the heavier industrial, the dark gray, would be located at the periphery of the city or kind of at the outlying areas away from lighter intensity uses, which is why, you know, you would see our heavier industrial area to the north and then the lighter industrial area buffering the commercial and residential areas to the south there. However, as I said, that's a relatively small portion of the city's land. This is industrial land. And what we find is that there is not a lot of heavy industry in Kattati or a lot of demand for that. Most of what is up in both of those areas at this time is what one would call light industrial. It's light manufacturing, it's food processing, it's light industrial or large warehousey style buildings. Next slide, please. So again, the general plan is, its recommendation to the city is to either combine the two zoning districts or to amend, keep to and amend them to reflect all of the uses that the general plan contemplates. And what we're proposing, staff's proposing, simply combining or collapsing the two districts into a single zone that would be called CI. And that's for a couple of different reasons. One is that the current range of land uses in the land use code between those two districts, it reflects all of the uses that are contemplated in the general plan. So there's no need to add additional uses or, you know, amend those areas. Everything is already included and accounted for as far as we can determine. In addition, to reduce the overall number of zoning districts in the city is a way to streamline our land use code and to simplify its interpretation, both for staff and members of the community, property owners and developers. Next slide, please. And in addition, we feel that allowing this broader range of uses in both of those zoning districts, collapsing to a single zoning district, is acceptable, given that the demand for industrial, heavy industrial uses is not like not, people are not knocking down our door asking for heavy industry land. Combining the two into a single district gives us more flexibility. And for the property owners and businesses in that area, gives them the opportunity for a broader range of uses across the entire area, particularly uses that'll thrive in a semi-industrial or freeway adjacent area, such as that is there, including indoor sports facilities, breweries and wineries that include tasting rooms, artist studios, and business incubators. Next slide. A couple of things I want to note about the ordinance proposing the combination of the districts. We are also suggesting, recommending a couple of permit requirement adjustments. Really minor, one is to adjust Brew Pub, which is currently not allowed in those districts, to be allowed with a minor use permit. And that breweries and minor vehicle services would go from being a use permit to a minor use permit. So the barrier to entry will be a little bit lower. We'll still... Will still require a use permit for certain uses that are more intensive, like heavy manufacturing and processing, construction contractors, laundry and dry cleaning, and recycling facilities. Those would come to the planning commission for conditions of approval to mitigate impacts on surrounding businesses and land uses. And finally, any existing businesses in those two areas in that new single zone, they would not be impacted by this change. It would only apply going forward to new uses or change of use in a certain property. And again, we expect that this will be more permissive, more flexible rather than less. So, next slide, please. We had a planning commission public hearing on this, the proposed ordinance on May 27th. And at that meeting, the planning commission did make a recommendation to the council to adopt the ordinance to combine the industrial zones into a single district. Next slide, please. Following the, following the publishing of the agenda for tonight, we came to our attention, there are a couple of items that we missed in the ordinance that we're asking you to add tonight in your consideration of the draft ordinance, sort of housekeeping items. It's difficult to chase down all of the different references in the zoning code. Thank you for, councilmember Sparks pointed these out to us. In section 172602 of the land use code, the reference to IG from, needs to be struck from this table related to the street types that are allowed in each zoning district. Next slide, please. And then in 173050, subsection G, we have another reference to industrial districts for, related to noise from leaf blower. So we would like to clarify in the language of the ordinance that it's the CI zoning district where that particular provision actually does not apply, it's an exception. So we would ask that in considering the ordinance, that the council consider inserting those two provisions into the draft ordinance. And with that, we have our recommendation. Next slide. The planning commission and the Community Development Department recommend that the city council hold a public hearing and introduce an ordinance amending Title 17 land use of the Katati Municipal Code to combine the commercial industrial and general industrial zoning districts into a single zoning district. With that, available to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? Vice Mayor Lemus.
Thank you, Autumn, for the report. It makes sense to me to do the combination. I had a question, maybe I didn't understand the live work component that was in both CI and IG. And then there's a, where it says no residential is allowed. So what's the live work compared to the residential?
That's a good question. The live work is defined by the code as a residential use. And it is also true that, you know, live work is specifically called out in those, we have, or in these districts. We have a number of inconsistencies in the zoning code. And so, you know, in this particular case, you know, we would interpret that as live work is allowed in those districts. When they, when it's speaking of, I think what happened was that that portion of the code was adopted before live work really became, you know, something that occurred commonly. And so our land use designation has superseded the code in that regard. That's actually something that we should fix.
So right now?
We could do, we could probably do that in a future code cleanup item because we happen to know that we have another one coming forward.
So I guess my question is right now, if someone were to come a warehouse or something, wanted to build like some housing or something, a unit or so for live work, would that be allowed or there's conflict?
You know, potentially, the code is also, the zoning code actually has a specific section that describes what live work is and how it can be configured. And it's quite specific. And so I think if you were, if you were talking about converting an entire warehouse into a live work project that was really nothing but residential units, was like lofts or something like that, that would actually not necessarily be allowed. The code seems to really take the work part very seriously. And so it really, it contemplates a type of living unit in which, you know, the work portion is really integrated into the living unit. So, you know, so it would depend on the specific project and whether it actually conformed to that portion of the code. But I think, for that description of live work, I think though that there is an inconsistency there, which you, which you're bringing up, which I think we should address in a future cleanup item. I'm not sure that we have all of the information to address it tonight. But it is some, because it requires a little bit more thought just to make sure that we aren't inadvertently taking some opportunity, you know, out that we might want to have.
Might, it might come back later for us to?
Yes, yes. Thank you for bringing that up, and we will add it because we do have, we already have a list of items for future cleanup. Yes, thank you.
And the use table does list live work as allowed in CI with a use permit currently?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's member Harvey.
You stated that this, when this gets adopted, it's moving forward. So what happens in an example where there's a use that's being utilized and that person leaves, but the person coming is doing the exact same thing as the previous? Are they then not allowed to do that if it's not allowed in the zoning? Or is that type then grandfathered for the next person?
Well, it, so there are two answers to that. So one is it depends based on whether there was a use permit for that land use. So if it was, if there is a use permit and what the new business is going to do fits all of the descriptions and requirements of that use permit, then yes, absolutely. Secondly, though, I will say that what we are planning here is additive rather than subtractive? Subtracting. So what we're doing is we're taking the two zoning districts and essentially zipping them together. So none of those are being removed. So now what's allowed in, you know, in the entire district will be reflective of everything that was allowed between the two, the CI and the IG. And, you know, so if anything, it's more permissive, there's more opportunity for property owners and businesses within that entire district.
Yeah, thank you. I was just concerned about, you know, someone selling their business. If they sell their business and somehow then they, they couldn't continue on. But it sounds like there's.
There shouldn't, there shouldn't be any impact.
Okay, thank you.
The use permit goes with the parcel, not the person?
Exactly, yeah. And again, though, we're talking about a number of uses that don't even require a use permit, you know, within the code.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. So any public comment? This is the public hearing we're opening for the ordinance amending Title 17 of the code. Anybody in the chambers? Okay, we'll go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on this item. Seeing no hands, Mayor Ford, that will end a public comment.
All right, so back to council for discussion. Any discussion?
What was that? You said there were two provisions. One was the leaf blowing. What was the first provision?
It is street types that are allowed.
Okay, that was the grid that you showed that had the difference.
Yes, yeah. So just removing the IG so that we are left with CI, which is what we're proposing to name the new combined district.
Thank you.
My only comment is that I'm happy to see IG go away. It's the only zoning code that doesn't match the name. Didn't make any sense. Why is it IG and not GI? So anyway, any other comments? Go ahead.
No, I think it'd be great to have breweries or even like tasting or wine tasting rooms there, like a beverage district or something would be nicer.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, and I do have a question. Just was there outreach done as part of this to the, the business owners in these zones? And did we receive any feedback from them?
Yeah, we, so we always have a noticing requirement when we're doing any tinkering with the code. And now there's a state requirement that we actually give people longer lead time. So it's a 20-day notice period. So we, and we noticed both for, for both public hearings, planning commission and council. So yes, that was all done to, to all the properties within the 500-foot radius. And we don't usually get very many calls. I did get a few calls on this, which is nice, you know, it means that people are paying attention. No concerns, you know, well, concerns that their use might be impacted. Once they understood that an existing use would not be impacted, then, you know, nothing, nothing much that was really droney, you know, raised any eyebrows.
Go ahead, yes.
When you say we noticed the buildings, is it the owners or do we actually notice the tenants also?
Both.
Both, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, okay. If there's no more discussion, I want to be clear, we've closed the public hearing. And now I would entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance on packet page 234.
I make a motion that we introduce an ordinance amending Title 17 land of a Katati Municipal Code to combine the commercial industrial and general industrial districts into a single zoning district in accordance with the city's general plan, including the staff recommendations for changes to the street types and the leaf blower section.
Blower, yeah.
Did I get?
Yeah.
Was that it?
Noise restrictions, yeah.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that carries five to nothing. Thank you. All right, we're on to agenda item 11. We have two regular agenda items. 11A is approval of the 2025 Running Fence Running Event and Festival in La Plaza Park. And we'll start with a staff report.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and members of the council. So the Empire Runners Club is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community service organization that fosters a running community in Sonoma County inclusive of all ages and abilities. The Running Fence Art Project separately, that spanned over 24 miles of landscape through Marin and Sonoma Counties, will be celebrating its 50th anniversary in 2026. To commemorate the anniversary of the art installation, the Empire Runners are proposing to host a new 5 and 10K race starting and finishing in La Plaza Park this September 13th, 2025, and adding a marathon, proposing a marathon next year in 2026, which would be a separate, a separate request. But they're looking to start the celebration this year with a 5K and 10K run. They are proposing it to be a 5 and 10K race plus art festival in La Plaza Park between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. They have requested exclusive use of La Plaza Park and the La Plaza streets surrounding the park between Old Redwood Highway and West Sierra and the, and also between West Sierra and Old Redwood Highway near the Demonstration Garden. So kind of that whole half circle of the hexagon. In addition, they would also request food sales by food trucks and vendors, sales of goods and other items, amplified live music or live entertainment and alcoholic beverage sales. What they have, they have requested fee waivers for the event as indicated in the letter that's attached. Per the park policy, rental fees may be waived for the first year of a large multi-year event. One thing that's not on the staff report, but is in the other part of the, in the resolution and other conditions of approval is that they would also, they also requested Old Redwood Highway to be shut down for this race, for the foot race between La Plaza Park at East Katati and the southern border of town during that race, which would be from 5:00 AM until, and reopened at noon on that date, with the park being closed longer than that. But the race would be in the morning part, the first part of the day. So they have requested a fee waiver. The sum of fees that they have requested add up with various permits add up to $2,693 plus a $500 deposit. Given the opportunity to bring a new large community event to Katati, the staff, we do recommend the 100% fee waiver. For this event, we would still recommend collecting the $500 deposit. And if they were to apply again next year for the marathon to be part of that festival to be hosted in Katati, they would be eligible for the 50% fee waiver for the second year. If approved, they would also be considered one of the free recology events that we get for the year for the trash and recycle service, which I do not think includes restrooms, but I'd have to follow up on that. It does include trash recycle and compost for sure. And with that, we are recommending that the city, the city council adopt the resolution approving the race as well as the use of live entertainment, sales of food and vendors of food trucks, the sales of alcoholic beverages, approval of fee waiver and approval of fee waivers producing, to produce the event. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I also do have John Rose here, who is the event host, and he can answer any questions about details of the event that I may not know, so.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, would you like to make any comments before we just dive into questions?
Yeah.
Free.
As a runner, I get the point fast, so you'll appreciate that. So, good evening, Katati Council, mayor, vice mayor, esteemed citizens online. I'm John Rose with the Empire Runners. Tonight, I'm here to discuss art, art history and athletics. Despite Sonoma State University canceling art, art history and athletics, these subjects are an important part of our local heritage. Forty-nine years ago, Sonoma County was the art epicenter of the world with Crestone and John Claude's Running Fence. As stated, the Running Fence was a 24 and a half mile long, 18-foot high fabric fence with stretch from West Redwood Avenue and Meacham Hill all the way to the Pacific Ocean. And although it was only displayed for two weeks in 1976, it required four years of contentious public debate, all things considered. It was, it was finally approved and was off in front page news. Here's a cover of the one guy who ran the Running Fence on Runner's World Magazine in 1976. I think I'll hold it for the camera, but for, for the team, you can pass it around. Why not? So Empire Runners was founded 50 years ago and is part of that running boom of the 1970s that inspired Crestone and John Claude's Running Fence. And we wanted to organize a local foot race in Katati to celebrate our local art, athletics and art history. And the Running Fence Run will be true performance art. A foot race and art festivals, runners will strive for their best athletic performance. And artists will be, bring art inspired by Crestone and John Claude's works, running, or even the beautiful landscape of Sonoma County. Tonight, I'm asking the council to formally approve the Running Fence Run Foot Race and Art Festival for Patriot Day weekend, Saturday, September 13th, 2025. More ambitious marathons planned for the 50th anniversary, which will also be the 25th anniversary of 9/11. We hope to have a ceremony on 9/11, 2026, Friday. Run the race on Saturday, which will be the 50th anniversary of Crestone and John Claude's race. And just have a general good time, encourage people to get out there and run.
Great, thank you. If you, you can hang out and see if there are any questions for you. So, starting at this end, councilmember Sparks.
Hi, thank you for being here. I just had a question about the timing because the closure on Old Redwood Highway is going to be pretty disruptive for.
Yeah, we'll open as quick as possible. Some people asked, can we walk the Running Fence, 5K? So hopefully it won't be all the way till noon. That was just kind of a request. And hopefully we can do like one-way traffic. It just kind of depends on how many people actually turn out for this race.
What, what time is the race going to begin?
We'd hold that about 8:00 in the morning. So, you know, in theory, a 5K, you should be able to get through that in an hour. But if you're walking it and wheelchairs and all that other stuff and doing a 10K, it might stretch into the 10 o'clock hour.
But it's necessary to be out there two hours before to?
What's that?
It's necessary to have the road close at 6:00 if they're?
Probably not. It probably won't be closed that early. Probably takes an hour.
Okay, just because the application said 6:00 AM to noon. So that's why I was asking about that.
We made it a little bit broad in case we do require that much time, but I doubt it. And if, even if it was, it'd be partially closed, we'd be putting up barricades and then allowing traffic through. And if, even if it was, it'd be partially closed, we'd be putting up barricades and then allowing traffic through. Um, yes, we will, we will.
Okay. And maybe this is for the city manager, but who would be responsible for the traffic control during?
Empire Runners Club.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I can answer that too. Um, so we would have the Empire Runners Club hire, um, provide trained traffic control. That was something that when we did the review that our public works department requested was that we have them trained in. But he is able to hire a construction company or some other company that's trained in professional for that. And would let us know, we are asking, asking for a traffic control plan thirty days before the event. And that will be approved by our police department and public works department.
There's a number of companies that offer that in Sonoma County for all the bike races and triathlons and everything else that goes on here. So plenty of opportunities.
All right. Thank you very much.
One map says that there'll be vendors and things in La Plaza Park. And one map says they will be on the street, kind of by Spankies. Is it both?
Both.
There, there will be a little both.
Little both, okay.
Because uh, uh, the runners will have to have a sign up booth and uh, receive some medals right there at the finish line. So there'll be some very runner-specific booths that will be torn, taken down as quickly as possible. And then the big parties festival at the La Plaza.
Thank you for that. And I'm glad to hear that we um, are having professionals with the traffic controls because it's a lot, that is a long way. I mean, usually we just close down a very small section of Old Red and there's a lot of opportunity for cars to enter and exit Old Red. So I'm glad to hear that we are um, hiring professionals.
Uh, President Lemus.
No, I'm also glad and I'm looking forward to running this. My sister's a, a member of the Empire Runners.
All right.
Hee Wee Lemus, she was a runner for a long time. She still runs, but I'm looking forward to running it. And I remember as a child to going to see the, the Running Fence. Yeah, that was out there. So.
My mom offered to take us up to, to see it. I grew up in Hayward and yeah, me and my brother were too young to think about being in the, the car with all the slug bugs. So we said, no, we're not, we're not.
I think I was like ten years old, I think, or so, when I remember seeing it.
Great.
So thank you.
Awesome.
For our restaurants downtown, does the current ordinance allow them to sell grab and grow and, and their foods on the sidewalk during an event like that? Or would that take in an additional um, permit, use permit or something?
They, I mean sidewalk, um, if it's properly permitted, sidewalk bending is pretty straightforward to do. Most of them though, don't bother. They just take the customers from the events that just walk in.
Opportunity of that type.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will try and include the local vendors first to, with their food booths.
That'd be great. And um, there will be a wheelchair division as well or, or?
If they want.
Wheelchair entrance can.
Not specific, but uh, we, we do want to make it open for walkers. Uh, people, I was at the Catati Climate Festival and people specifically asked for that.
Right.
Got some volunteers from the, the Rotary Club to do a water station itself.
Nice. Okay, you have one more?
I was gonna say, um, a lot of the races I go to have walkers on, people in walkers.
Oh, uh-huh.
Walking it. And there was this man, Daryl Beardall, he was like a longtime runner.
Okay.
Um, that he was on there. But my que- I had a quick question. Sorry. Um, are you gonna have like the, the chip timer arch like in the middle of the street? Or where's that planned to be?
The, the start and finish would be uh, just past, um, what's uh, what's uh?
Between Spankies and Bow and Arrow.
Yeah, yeah. So it would not go across the major highway.
On Old Red.
That's what we would have the timer start and end. And it would almost get to the end of Old, um, West Railroad. That's more of a county problem, I guess, for us to get separate permissions from them. Figured I wanted to get you guys to say yes, because they have a substantial fee to evaluate everything. So.
Okay, great. Okay, any more questions before we do public comment? Okay, so thank you. You may be seated and I'll invite others who have anything to add. So we'll start with Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make your public comment. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Hi, um, I remember the Cristo Fence. I was a kid here in Catati and um, it was a, a great thing. Um, I remember though, there being a bicycle race through the streets behind the stage. Like El Rancho and West School, um, East School and all that. I want to propose that instead of closing down Old Redwood Highway, which to um, go behind the stage, go El Rancho through the tunnel, go to the west side. You just put in those protected bike lanes and everything, and then go, go around the west side of Catati rather than interrupt business for six hours for the run. It still end up in, at the Catati Hub, but um, I just don't think it's good to abstract traffic for that long for one group of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Ford, that will end public comment.
Okay, anybody in the chamber is wishing to make public comment? Not seeing anyone, that'll close public comment. And uh, back to the council for discussion or further questions? I just had one question. Um, so did you discuss with the club routes and other possible routes that might be less disruptive or? I don't know if that's.
They just came, they came with that route.
Okay, do you, yeah, if you, if you can come address that issue, that'd be great.
Yes, uh, so um, that route was chosen and it won't, won't take up six hours for sure of a, a traffic uh, block. Just, just enough to clear the runners and then we'll go to single lanes. It's gonna be great for business because this is gonna put Catati on the map. Uh, but the Catati, Catati Hub is kind of separate from the uh, Running Fence. West Railroad and Meacham Hills, the, the beginning. So uh, to get from here to West Railroad is a nice five K. We can double it up and make a ten K if we still have enough time to plan that out. But yeah, unfortunately, we are very sensitive to uh, avoiding as much traffic disruption. And hopefully it's gonna be just like the, uh, the holiday festival where you shut down both lanes right here in town. And then maybe we can just do a single lane unless there's like thousands of runners, which would just be amazing, a great problem, but uh, probably not a problem we're gonna experience on the first race.
Okay, thanks. Any more discussion or questions?
I, I just have a question of what is it we're actually approving in terms of the time scale for the road closure of Old Red down to the city limits? Cause I'm hearing, what I'm hearing sounds pretty reasonable, but what it says on the application is six AM to noon, totally closed. So what are we actually approving here?
So for the park, we requested five AM to seven PM for, and the surrounding La Plaza streets just behind that connect to West Catati. And then if you would like, we can change the um, Old Redwood Highway and La Plaza behind the demonstration garden to, from six AM to noon. It's, or from, sorry, like uh, I think he said seven. It's gonna, I mean, it takes, Public Works will be closing the streets and they start all of them. At, and so it's, can take a while to do that. So it's kind of nice to have the buffer because they have to put detours in too. And it's, it's, it's somebody that maybe hasn't done that, that um, street closure before. So it could take time. I mean, that's why we, I mean, we don't have to, it doesn't have to be started, like completed right by, at six AM. But if we start, it just gives us enough time to make sure that we're, that's two hours before the race starts to get traffic all rerouted and everything. But if you want to change it, we can.
And it, I, I'm just curious also, it says, it says the race starts at nine thirty in the application, but then you said eight o'clock.
Could be eight o'clock. So there may be some things that need slight adjustments.
I just feel a little like not quite sure what we're proving because I'm hearing different things than what's in the application.
The application, I mean, there's been times that, it's been kind, kind of gone back and forth over time and times.
Okay.
So that's what we had at the time that we did the report was nine thirty.
Okay, well, I, I'm comfortable at this point approving as long as we're gonna try to get one lane of traffic going. Cause otherwise it's just gonna be hard for people to get in and out. We'll have to reroute so much down Valparaiso for the whole day.
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering um, how early they can start. I know the Cloak the Cow starts like at seven thirty in the morning. Um, Petaluma, and that's right in downtown Petaluma.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it's, is it seven or seven thirty? They have a mar- they have a half marathon and a ten K and a five K. And I want to say it starts about seven and then seven fifteen, then seven thirty, but they do start it kind of early so they can get people out and back and, and um, so that's why I'm kind of wondering about the time, whether the time can be moved up a little bit.
To start earlier?
To start, I don't know, seven thirty?
I mean, if there's a, if there's a half marathon, that's longer than the ten K, but I know that this is targeted towards families too. The five K and that seven thirty is a good time for runners. It might not be a good time for little ones.
Okay. Okay. I was just at that.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with eight o'clock start time for the ten K and eight thirty or eight forty five or whatever for the five K. It makes sense. I, I'm not sure how you handle running the two distances, but um, I'm comfortable approving it as is. I'm excited about the event. I would love to see this be a big success. And I understand the connection to West Railroad because you're actually trying to connect with the Fed. So I get that. And if, if it is a big success, we might talk in future years about going over Cypress instead of Old Red or something, you know, looking at other ways to get, so we can talk in the future. But um, I, so if people are comfortable with approving as is, with the clear understanding, like we need the road opened afterwards as quickly as is reasonable and safe. But we could also add a little language to that effect of the condition, if you, if you feel better with that in there. Are people okay going ahead as is?
I, I mean, if we added a condition that doesn't have a strict requirement, but just says, you know, we, we we will attempt to reopen the road, keep traffic open in at least one direction and reopen as quickly as possible, something like that.
So maybe we could add a bullet under that condition on closure that just says, um, if, if safe and possible, the street will be reopened prior to this time or something like that. It's mostly, mostly about the, the reopening time that's the big concern, right? Is that okay to add that language? See any obstruction to that? Okay. Uh, any more discussion? Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make the motion uh, to approve the, the Empire Runners Club twenty twenty five Running Fence, Running Event. Subject to conditions of approval, including the additional change to open up the streets as soon as possible.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that carries unanimously. I better get running. All right, thank you. Okay, so we're on to um, agenda item eleven B. Now, uh, do people want a five-minute break before we continue with this item? Should we go? Okay, just flag me down if we need to take a break. This might take more than five minutes. I'm not sure. So.
Maybe I'll, I'll try and keep it. I'll, I'll start the timer and I'll.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to rush you. So uh, I'll, I'll, item eleven B is adoption of the resolution approving the fiscal years twenty twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven budgets. Our first two-year budget adoption. Start with the staff report.
Yes, absolutely. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, fellow members of the staff here in behind me and our community um, in watching remotely or in the future. First, I just want to take a breath and take a moment to thank my fellow staff here in this room, especially Damian, for his diligence and patience as we pulled this all together. This is our first, as you mentioned, uh, biennial budget for the city of the Catati. But I also want to thank my staff, including Rosie Speranza and especially Neil Tomlinson for all of their hard work, jumping from their regular daily tasks, trying to get payroll done and pay our bills and do all these other things. Get our contracts out to then just go, hey, I need this done on the budget. Can you get this done? Here's some number changes. I've had some additions. Um, and so they're just uh, really backbone and helping us get this all together. And I really want to make sure I thank them for that. For the last few months, it's been uh, a pleasure of getting this through um, and presenting it for you here tonight. So next slide. So on this, uh, during this presentation, um, there's been some changes. So our regular budget cycle has changed. We now have a two-year budget cycle. So before we had one of these little hubs with the spokes going around it. But now we have that two-piece, uh, where we're incorporating what it looks like with that second year. So it, while it has transformed and it's a longer process, it's still really uh, focused on having those frequent updates for our community and for council and providing those major changes in that next year. Rather than those dedicated budget studies where we're looking at um, the year and what our strategic plans are for the each year. We had the opportunity to look at things in a longer scope and have longer uh, planning, which in the stay in age with all of our economic uncertainty, I think was a brilliant way to go. Much more difficult and fun and exciting. However, um, it's gonna be a lasting impression and allow us to have more meaningful touch bases when we look at the quarterly updates. So next slide. So for this year, the budget planning process started with February second, or twentieth, excuse me, with our strategic planning, followed by our April first session. Quickly there, we had our first budget study, which covered the general fund and finalized our council goals. Then we had our meeting right after that on the April fifteenth, where we went into the next budget study on enterprise funds, special revenue funds, capital funds, and the update on the general fund. And today we're presenting the budget in its wholeness for adoption, along with the other consent items, which you've already adopted. Our gam limit, our salary updates and um, our policy updates. Next slide. So within this budget document packet, uh, on packet page three fifty-three, it was also on budget page fifty-one. We provide the overall economic environment for both art, for including the global economic environment, national, state, region and for the city. So in a summary version right now, it really is just uncertainty. I use this word a lot when we were looking at the twenty twenty budget and it's really back in fashion again. The US is expected to have slower growth and the probability of a recession have increased primarily due to uncertain due to sudden shocks in our uh, econ- economic um, uh, markets due to the tariffs going, being yes, we're having tariffs. No, we're only gonna have some of them. Oh, they're back on. And so some of that has been uh, touch and go for other um, global participants. And they're now learning to trade with each other rather than relying on the US government. And so we're unsure where that's going to lead. For California, the main driver of economic troubles appear to be the continued issues with housing development. We just need more housing. It's something where uh, people aren't able to afford the houses or housing here in the state. And so they're having to go elsewhere. And so we might be losing more talent um, to just that transfer of, out of the state. And that's again, likewise for Sonoma County. Uh, and there also is the issues with our continuing budget deficits and how they're going to remedy the state budget deficit currently. Next slide. Uh, so assumptions that play in from that kind of global economic view into our individual budget. The economic uncertainty has some, caused some expected impacts uh, related again to our development. As funding becomes more expensive for developers, as interest rates increase or cost of goods. You know, if you have to order products that you were expecting to get from China and now those are significantly more expensive in order to put it in your building project. There's just more uncertainty. So as such, no development fees really have been included for the fiscal years twenty five, twenty six or twenty six, twenty seven. This is again, consistent with our budget studies. We also have uncertain impacts from the Fed, state and regionally as they try to remedy holes in their budgets as they're projecting uncertainty. So we're not sure what they're going to be doing, changing, which might impact our budget um, indirectly or directly. For our overall revenues, we have additional slowing in sales tax as individuals maybe decide to save more or hold off on those spending pieces around our community. And so that then in turn drives less sales tax and less revenue for the city. We have slower, um, slow growth in cannabis business again. That's one of those things where sometimes that's where people do choose to spend a little bit more of their money if they're trying maybe a little bit more escapism or dealing with some other issues. And so, but we, uh, we do have a little bit more growth planned there. And so, but we uh, we do have a little bit more growth planned there, but it is still slower than maybe if it was a growing uh economy. We do again have excluded certain development revenues. And we are anticipating decreased water consumption as people are trying to save as much money as they can. They can decide not to run their dishwasher or washing machine as many times as they used to, or let their crap grass kind of go a little bit more. And so they're going to continue to try and um can uh consume less, but we do have offsetting increases in our rates. For our expenditure sides, we have our project costs, which are based on engineering estimates. We are hesitantly optimistic that with the continued decrease in spending from other um competitive uh cities or districts that are working on other projects, if they're not going for capital improvement projects, it's going to be a better bidding environment for us. And so we want to make sure we are primed for bringing projects forward, at least to know what the real cost would be for us now. As opposed to maybe waiting longer down the line, because maybe we can save quite a bit of money if we can get some projects done more inexpensively as there's more competition for it now. And we'll talk about projects a little bit later on. Um, we also have increased insurance. We talked about during our budget study session. Um, we have a little bit better numbers now, but we're still uncertain. Um, we have, do have budget at full employment, and we are continuing our full lump sum CalPERS payment. But we do not have any included additional discretionary payments to CalPERS included at this time. We will be bringing back Dimitri again in the fall, once we have the studies back from CalPERS, the actuarial reports. And we can plan on any new um ADPs at that time if budget allows. Next slide. So getting into the general fund, again, the general fund is the primary fund used by the government, uh, the city of Qatari. It records all of our inflows and outflows of resources um that are not a special purpose. So this is anything that's not specifically for water, not specifically for sewer, not specifically for, you know, gas transa- uh, transactions that are to be used on the streets. Um, so these are all the activities are our police department, public works, community development, administrative services, city council, and um city manager's office and recreation. Sorry, Ash. Yes, last but not least. Next slide. So the overall highlights of the general fund is that we have um operating revenues exceeding operating expenses for both years. They are very thin, um, but they are continuing to still have a positive balance. Um, we still are continuing to use that fund balance that we've accumulated uh accumulated over the years to work towards capital projects. We're expecting two point six million in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and just over three hundred thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. We do have our continued debt payments related to our pension liabilities as well as our streets uh fund. And so the the total debt payments for those are continuing through the years for approximately eight hundred thousand each year. The ending fund balance for twenty-five, twenty-six is just under four million and then uh three point four million in twenty-six, twenty-seven. As a percentage of our operating expenses, they are both over that twenty-five percent threshold, but we were going to be meticulously monitoring this as we are again seeing um changes in sales tax. Um, in this uh report compared to our budget study, we did already draft down the sales tax from initial proposals. And so we want to make sure we're diligently following those and uh making sure our expenses are also closely monitored and we're managing those as closely as possible. Next slide. So as we've uh iterated during our budget study sessions and and uh with each budget adoption, annual net operating surplus, we really need a million and a half for capital projects on an ongoing basis. We're clearly not meeting that in this year um and the next two years, but we look to having um better revenues in the future. But we need to also uh, again, goes back to that managing the expenses and uh monitoring the revenues in the future and looking towards new revenue sources as well in the future. Uh, we do again have plan on having that mid-year discussion around CalPERS losses, what is going to be our strategy. Um, we have energy costs that are continuing to increase and increased consumption could dramatically change that cost as well, because we only know one piece of it really is the rates. And that really drives our projects around the microgrid project that we're currently working on. And so depending on what fu- funding sources we might have available for that, it has to pay for itself, absolutely. But if it can lead to actual other savings, that would be something that is both beneficial for the environment as well as our pocketbook. And so that's something that we really um are going to continue to look at as we move forward. Again, we're unknown uh impacts at other levels that might be coming our way. We have um increased mandated programs that the city is working on these unfunded uh programs to provide reports and uh meet uh the state's demands, which require staff time. Um, but again, that takes us away from other projects. And so how do we continue to meet those needs of our community? And that's all kind of included within our staffing report. When we did the budget study, this is what we feel like we need at the staff level. The un- diversified general fund revenues, we have over uh fifty-four percent of the proposed budget operating revenues are derived from sales tax. And over um, so. Sorry, I would say, so fifty-four percent of it is derived from sales tax. And then seventy-three percent is a sales tax and property tax combined. So we really are reliant on those main sources of revenue for our general fund. So adding those new pieces of revenue could really be beneficial to us going forward and make a big difference. Next slide. So again, Qatari's revenues are based on the best, uh, the revenue assumptions for the budget are are the best available information. Like I stated, we had some updated sales tax based on Q four twenty twenty uh four. And so that did bring our numbers down a little bit. They were already, you know, conservative expectations. And so they weren't that dramatically changed from our budget study. Um, but again, we're, we're not sure really where the first quarter, you know, where everything's kind of changed, where we're going to be heading. Um, but uh, projections are really in line with what we have in here. Um, because they do, they take their actuals and then build in their expectations based on what they know. And so that's where we are right now. Um, we do still have conservative estimates included, um, sales tax and measure S. Again, fifty-four percent of the operating revenues, um, they're relatively secure. We feel like they're going to be status quo, maybe softening a little bit as prices, you know, uh, are increasing maybe from um increased tariffs and costs there. So that leads to higher taxes. But then maybe people are spending less because they're having to spend more on one item. Um, so it's a kind of a mismatch of increased price, less spending on individual smaller items. Um, property taxes, we're really uh looking at just flat growth with the uh CPI increase uh increases from uh the assessors applied. Again, cannabis has slow growth due to um some slight increase in business activity uh in the city. So the operating revenues, next slide. We have a uh approximately total of ten point eight million estimated for the twenty-four and twenty-five fiscal year, as well as the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So really, it's a slight decrease from what we're estimated for the end of this fiscal year. Um, and then we should be coming back up for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Sorry for the typo. It's not two twenty-sixes. Sorry about that. I saw Susan's eyes. I'm like, yep, no, I see it now. Okay, thank you. Um, so it should be a slight increase, but again, nothing substantial, nothing new. Um, and again, we, if we do get a significant development come in here, we get some um impact fees, some other changes. That could be a change in that picture. And again, we would report back during those quarterly updates, those changes that are not cl- currently included. Next slide. So looking at the expenditure side for all departments, I could tell you, we did a really detailed review of all of our expenses. We went line by line and into the lines, we went into the detailed transactions for every line to see um what is reasonable, what needed to be. And I think we even said during a budget study, we started with a zero budget. Each department had no information in there. You can go and look at your prior budgets, but you had to build it line by line from the detail. Um, so uh, except for some items that my department builds out, um, basically the uh personnel costs and the um uh allocated contract services, which we've talked about, the insurance, utilities, all of those things. We help build out so that they're not looking, having to worry about those things. So for uh those personnel costs for CalPERS, um, we're just again, including that lump sum payment for PERS based on the actuariales we have today. We will have new actuariales, uh, which will be the payment for twenty-five, twenty-six. The payment for twenty-six, twenty-seven is going to be different. We don't know how it's going to be different. But that will be a change that will come back when we bring it back in a future um revisions during the quarterly updates. Contract services, we have the allocated contract services that are shared indirect cost, such as our audit fees, janitorial costs, insurance, utilities. These are all based on our full FTE, which we allocate based on the proportional basis of service that they do for each department or um fund. And so those are what is allocated. Insurance, we did have um ink better uh estimates that were received. Um, so they were a slight decrease from what came in through the budget study session. Um, but we still have some market uncertainty. Now, you know, we have the LA fires, begin now with the protests. Um, like what's gonna uh come to fruition? It's always kind of changing. So um, those will be finalized and will only be finalized once we've already adopted the budget, but we'll um bring those if any significant changes come through that. All departments are budgeted based on full staffing again. Um, that includes all the negotiated MOUs, including um, we just adopted the side letter for the uh, within the salary schedule, which does have a title change, which will be incorporated into the org chart for the police department within the budget documents before we send it off to GFOA um and CSFO for our budget award. Next slide. So uh, for operating expenditures, um, they are unfortunately not flat. Um, they are continuing to increase based on the reasons previously provided. So we're expecting our twenty-four, twenty-five to end at uh nine point eight million dollars and to continue to increase in twenty-five, twenty-six to ten point five and then to ten point seven. So we're again, we're trying to constrict those between the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven as much as possible to keep them as consistent. Really, the personnel is the significant change there. Um, we do have some again change or expected increases in insurance that we've included in twenty-six, twenty-seven. But it is the personnel and insurance that are really the differences there. Um, and again, we'll continue to try and uh monitor those and make sure we can keep them as right as possible. But that is our conservative estimates on those expenses at this point in time. Next slide. So again, those changes from um the budget study sessions, we had the uh decreased expected costs, which I haven't talked about yet uh for Sunflower Park. Um, so we've actually brought down the cost for Sunflower Park based on bid estimates by uh eight hundred thousand dollars. So again, that's that bid environment and and um expectations based on that, that we hope again, that it will come in a lot lower than our initial estimates were. Um, budget, uh, the debt service again at that uh eight hundred thousand. Veterans building rental revenue sharing, we were off by that fifteen thousand, and so uh that's been adjusted. We have insurance estimates, which were decreased now by thirty thousand. And we have the uh project cost increase for the streets project, which was also adopted for the um consent counter. Next slide. So here is the graphic depiction of the city's general fund revenues, expenses, and fund balance. The fund balance does continue to exceed the twenty-five percent required for the operating fund balance. However, staff are dedicated to continue monitoring um the continued fi- due to the continued financial uncertainty. So um, we are at, you know, thirty-seven percent, thirty-one percent. But we want to make sure we are keeping it so that if we do have um and any uh emergency where that funding is needed, that we have those reserves available and ready for an emergency situation. Next slide. The transfers in are related to uh public safety, the veterans billing funds coming in, as well as the community facilities districts funds coming in. And then the transfers out are primarily derived for uh capital projects, which are included in our grants fund. So any capital projects or other projects that are partially grant funded, those are all housed in the grants fund. We have the debt service, the capital projects fund, and then we also have some money going to special revenues. Those are primarily related to the canine fund. So the general fund does primarily fund all of the canine fund uh operations. And then also um some small transfers to the successor agency. Next slide. So for the capital projects, the city has implemented a system where we continue to plan for our projects on a critical basis, where we're separating A, which is more critical or higher priority projects from B, other additional or not as high priority projects. For the parks capital projects in twenty-five, twenty-six, there's approximately three point two million of projects that we're proposing. The Sunflower Park, we had a revised budget of um just down to two, uh, just over two million. In the budget study, we had almost three million in there. Um, again, this is a grant matching project, and uh we're excited to get it going here and out to bid pretty soon. We also have the cater basketball court resurfacing project at just fifty thousand and then continued design work on the Vonda Floody uh Ranch Barns. Next slide. For the twenty-six, twenty-seven uh year, uh, the projects for parks are all listed as B projects. The Verona Floody Ranch construction at two million um really has unknown um revenue sources. We're really hoping to do some fundraising and other mixed source, maybe get some grant monies or other pieces to help pay for that overall um ranch. And then we also have our Putnam Park improvements, where again, depending on the funding that the city receives, what our um, our uh accounts are looking for, then that would be escalated to a higher priority if we have the funds available. Next slide. For the streets capital projects, we have approximately three point one million in projects for twenty-five, twenty-six. This includes the highway one, the continuing highway uh one sixteen intersection safety project, the twenty-six safety preservation project, and the twenty-seven uh street preservation project. That's the initial design part of the twenty-seven project and the start of the class one pathway maintenance. We are going to continue to have an annual amount available for the traffic safety and the landscaping improvement projects as needed. So these will have uh budgeted amounts of eighty-five thousand dollars. And then uh total, and then we have the trash implementation phase one project, which has a budget of two hundred and forty thousand. There's uh one project included in our B project, which is our ADA transition plan on Redwood Drive, which if we found had some additional funding, then we would prioritize that, or maybe we get some specific streets type funding, we would then prioritize that. For twenty-six, twenty-seven, next slide, uh, we have approximately two point six million in capital projects, which is again, that continuing highway one sixteen uh safety project and landscaping, lighting, and bicycle pedestrian safety projects at the eighty-five thousand a year and the twenty-seven street preservation project, which was designed in the prior year. So really having these two-year budgets, you can see how a capital project starts the design in one year and then comes to fruition with budget numbers um and overall. What we haven't included in the budget, uh, it's, it's in here. We have all the project of projects descriptions and everything are available within um the budget. So you'll see them listed on there. I should have said this before, it starts with the letter B. It has the description, how they meet our general plan, and in the funding sources, it says other funds or unknown funds. And so that's how you know that there, there's no dedicated funds for it at this point in time. So for the B projects, that would be the traffic signal at William Jo- George, which would be estimated at one point three million. Other capital projects we have planned for the next slide are the re-roofing of the police building. Um, this does have some other outline um buildings, which I believe is Sunflower Park and well.
Well, two.
Well, two. Okay, I was going to say the wrong, okay, well, two. Um, and then we have a B project, which is again, I spoke about the microgrid project, which we'll continue working on just at a staffing level and bring anything further to council. Um, if there, we do find some other funds available to help push it forward. And then for our stormwater, uh, we have the trash implementation plan for that two hundred and forty thousand. Next slide. So on to our special revenue and other funds. This uh graphic uh shows kind of how the special revenue funds are broken out and operated and managed by the different actual departments that you'll find within the general fund. Next slide. Um, I do want to comment, I had some uh great conversations with uh Susan Harvey, and she was fantastic at pointing out a few of the discrepancies. And she was fantastic at pointing out, uh, a few of the discrepancies, a few, uh, that I had, we had in our budget book. Um, and quite a few of them unfortunately were in the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are ones that are dedicated for a single revenue source that's coming in. And it has to be dedicated for use of a single or a special purpose. Um, one of those, uh, several of those typos were really in, uh, headers. Where the numbers and the headers did not tie in agree to the numbers that I had changed down below. So my poor staff are trying to keep up with me. And change the headers that were manually input to the numbers that agreed in the table. So. The budget numbers in the data are the correct numbers for the budget. And we've revised those and provided, uh, updated pages or in the back of the chambers. And will be amended to the, uh, agenda packet for publishing and. Will be updated for the budget when we take it for adoption, uh, or sorry, excuse me, for the budget award with G F O A and C S M F O. Um, this is the summary information, um, uh, and then we also did amend, it was a great recommendation. To, uh, create some language around fund balances that were not included. And while I know they're not included because these funds are fully distributed every year, so it's not intended to keep a fund balance. And so this is our, uh, veterans building, right? So we help manage the veterans building, but all of the net proceeds are distributed out. On a monthly basis between the city and the county. And so there's never a retained fund balance for those. And so there's nothing to show. It would be an empty graph. And so that's why those are not included on there. Um, there's also, um, I'll get to that in a second. Um, so this is the revenue seven, summary by fund. So it shows that a primarily, uh, revenues are coming and from gas tax. Which again is our, includes R M R A, we hold in a separate fund because we have other criteria, we have to meet with that. Public safety funds, M T C streets. So a lot of this is funds that go into specifically streets maintenance. And that's what it can be spent on. And then the public safety comes back to the general fund to pay for our police services. Next sign. So this again just breaks it out by the revenue summary of the special revenue funds by type. And I like showing this because it shows that the revenues are primarily taxes. These aren't one-time fees that are coming in as a special thing. You know, some of them are, but a majority of this is. Again, those gas taxes and other taxes that are applied and then distributed to the city for us to use for the special purposes. Next slide. And here's the breakdown of the expenditure summary of our special revenues by that expense type. Again, because we're receiving them all in for these special purposes, majority of them are for capital projects. Be it again, the gas tax that has to go to streets, our parks measure M, which has to be used for, um, capital projects related to parks. All of these are then being transferred into those capital project funds. So approximately, the one point eight million is going out in twenty five, twenty six. And then another one point four million in twenty six, twenty seven. So again, majority of these are what we're trying to leverage to pay for our capital projects. Going forward. So we're not using our general funds for projects that are covered in other special revenues. Next slide. For the internal service funds, this includes our vehicle maintenance and replacement fund, as well as the compensated absences fund. Everything is consistent with our budget study, where we're providing ongoing funding for the replacement of city vehicles, um. Uh, from the other funds. This includes in twenty five, twenty six, a replacement of one patrol vehicle. Upfit and conversion of two other police vehicles, a public works field truck. And, um, the, another truck that was, uh, rolled forward from a prior year. We do have some other new equipment, including two trailers, one for water and one as a flatbed. As a part of this process, we're also trying to move, move, continue to move to fuel efficient, cleaner energy vehicles. We're asking for council's approval to sign a letter, uh, to P G N E requesting, um, their E V program. So that we can get, um, access for them to hook up our system for the ability for, and Damon can speak better to this. Um, to outfit our system so that we can have the appropriate charging infrastructure for E Vs in the future. And so that's something we wanted to make sure we implemented now, since they can pay for it, we wouldn't have to incur it as a city cost. So that is a part of our add-ons to our resolution this evening as well as adopting the budget. For the compensated absences fund, it's protected based on salary and our benefit schedules for each of the two individual fiscal years. Again, there's really not a significant change from our budget study. Next slide. Our enterprise funds, um, these are used to account for our operations that are financed, uh, they're, and similar as a business operation. And so this is our water and our wastewater funds or sewer. On May twenty seventh, we adopted a rate study implementing new rates, which are going to be starting with the billing. Going out to our community that's covers the period from June fifteenth to July fifteenth. Where the bills are typically received in the beginning of the next month. So beginning of August is when these new rates are going to be applied. We also, uh, leaned on this rate study to adjust and, uh, really, uh, pin down our, uh, budget as well. To make sure that we were aligned with the study and what our projections would be and, um. And we had some minor differences, but, uh, all overall, we do find that they are consistent. And wanting to move forward towards, uh, we're currently at a, a dip on our, especially our sewer fund. And we're looking for those new rates to help turn us around so that we can continue to have the, uh, fund balance recover for future capital projects. The water maintains a reserve of thirty three percent, whereas the sewer operations does have a deficit at twenty three percent. And we're asking council per our policy to go ahead and go below that thirty three percent. As outlined within this, and again, we would continue to monitor it and maintain it and try and hold true to that twenty three percent. Knowing that with the new rates coming in, hopefully this will be the bottom and we'll be turning back around. Um, these are based on conservative revenues and estimates. We're trying to again align with that rate study. Um, and the cost management, you know, we can only look at revenue so much. We also need to make sure we're, um, managing our costs. While balancing preserving critical infrastructure for the future. Next slide. So the water funds combined. Sorry, I was probably talking on the wrong side. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, operating revenues for water funds, uh, we again included that rate increase, but we're not including significant connection fees. That are derived from, um, the, uh, construction and new developments. So those are not included. If we did have a significant development come to fruition, that would then again, approve, improve the financial balances for these. And allow for more, um, escalated capital projects going forward to be elevated up on the project list. We do have proposed capital project improvements of around seven hundred thousand, which includes the well to renewal remediation, the renewal, uh. Uh, replacement master plan, the distribution system monitoring, um, the renewal replacement, uh, from project for well one A and well three. As well as the start of the Cypress Tank, uh, new water main design. Uh, the changes in operating expenditures, again, very consistent with the general fund. That are based on personnel budgeting at full staff. We have the allocated contract services, which again, it's allocated across the, the main operating funds. Um, we have estimated increases in insurance and we have a continued water conservation going forward. We do have the cost of water procurement expected to increase above and beyond our, uh, rate increases at eleven percent. And we have again, consistent decreased water consumption. So those will be offsetting for the expense side of it. Um, the debt service back to the general fund and U A L for their U A L combination is approximately eighty thousand every year. Next slide. So now on to the sewer funds, which is combined for their operating and capital funds. Um, we do have the rate increase. No significant connection fees. Again, something comes in that will significantly change. The outlook for this fund, or at least bring it back a little bit quicker. However, we'll want to keep it conservative and reliable, uh, for our future. We do have some proposed capital projects, which include the sewer master plan and the sewer lift station renewal. And we have, um, some, um, the same changes in the operating expenses proposed. Um, increased wastewater treatment costs are approximately one percent for twenty five, twenty six and three percent for twenty six, twenty seven. We do have two different debt surfaces out of the water operations funds. There's their U A L payment, and then they also have a payment to the inclusionary housing fund for previous capital work. Um, for a loan from that fund. And for the sewer fund, for the capital fund, we did add a footnote disclosure that it is listed as a, um. Deficit balance within the all fund schedule. We are expect, we are proposing to meet that deficit balance. We can't deficit spend. The funding will come from somewhere, but depending on where we are. And economically with the sewer fund, it should per our rate study, needs to come from sewer operations. That's where it needs to come from and it will end up coming from. However, because the operations fund is also at only twenty three percent, it's not prudent at this time to move funds from there. So depending on what funding we have available from possible other funds, then we will be fitting and provide that to council back. As to where we will be covering those forms, funds from, uh, at that point in time when we hit those capital projects that come to you. Um, and again, if it does come from another, um, fund, it would have to be a loan. It would not be a gift of funds. We cannot do that. And so that would be what would be provided at that point in time. However. Since we are still in tumultuous times, not quite sure where things are going to be, give us a couple quarters. When we are starting those projects, we'll have a better idea where we want to pull this from. Next slide. Uh, so something, uh, we wanted to make sure we presented to council that, uh, was not a part of our budget study, but it's something that we've approved over time. So these are things that are ongoing costs that we have that, uh, we, uh, get to cover as we're going forward. And we have only two directs, really direct, direct debt that the city has. And that's our street improvements. And I, I call them bonds, but they're a lease, leaseback project. Most people understand it as a bond. It's a type of loan. That we have that we took out for our streets. So we had the initial debt of around seven million. We have principal balance remaining of just over six million, and this matures in twenty twenty forty and twenty forty one. We also have a pension, uh, taxable lease obligation. So that was our, uh, pension pay down that we did for four million. We have principal remaining of three point four million and that matures in twenty thirty six, twenty thirty seven. We also house some pass-through debt service for the assessment district as well as our successor agency. And this is where we get other funds in. That pay that debt. However, we, we host the debt, we facilitate it, we've also refunded it to help bring down the cost. For those other agencies for, we did it for both the assessment district as well as, um, the successor agency. We refinance both of those. In order to bring down the total debt service for them. But we receive those findings in from the state and or the county. And then pay those debt services from the city. We also have intergovernmental loans, which is kind of somewhat what I was talking about before, where we, uh, loaned some monies from other funds. To another fund for, to, to provide for our project. So specifically the in-lud housing fund provided, uh, a loan to the sewer fund. That has a total debt service now of, uh, just over, uh, sorry, just under seven hundred thousand, which has a maturity date of twenty thirty four. We also have general fund loans to the water and sewer funds for their portion of the unfunded pension debt. Um, and so they are paying back the general fund and then the general fund pays our debt service fund. Um, and then we have our overall debt, our, our pension obligations. Which again, is not a direct line item. You will see on our accounts, you will see it on our financial statements as an outstanding liability. Of our pension, uh, unfunded pension liability. However, it's not something, again, it gets reassessed every year with our outstanding liability is. And, uh, we would have to write them a letter at CalPERS to tell us what we would have to do to pay it off. Cause then they, it would be significantly higher than what we paid out over time. So next slide. This is just a stacked graph of that debt over itself. So on the bottom, we have that total debt service that is our direct debt for the U A L, um, debt pension debt. And the streets, uh, on top of that is just the enterprise funds. Again, that's internal, so it's paying back the general fund. So it's not. New debt, it's paying back still the city itself. Um, we have the, uh. Then private purpose trust, which again is a pass-through. We get the money from somewhere else and then just pay it out. And then the agency funds, which again is that same pass-through debt service. Next slide. So, um, to my conclusion, finally, um, the proposed twenty six, twenty, twenty five, twenty six and then twenty six, twenty seven budget. We really do continue to prioritize the city goals. Um, prioritize community engagement, long-term vitality and best-in-class community service. We are offering a balanced operating budget where operating expenditures do not exceed operating revenues for the general fund. And, um, and we'll look to continue that going forward. We have continued progress on investments and deferred capital projects. So that's that A and B projects where we will continue to monitor those and see what we can do to be fixed, fiscally prudent. While still, um, looking for the best for the city if we have some, um, good use of funds currently. Um, sewer is still fiscally constrained for the budget and the rate study projections. And we're going to really be continuing. Again, I know it's broken record to look at it and see what we can do to help bring it forward. We're going to continue to be committed to exercising prudence and integrity. And that continuously quarterly reporting or updating to council and our community. As we, um, are in, again, uncertain fiscal, um, constraints currently. And I'll take any questions.
Council questions? Go ahead.
Uh, so you mentioned, um, on, on the sewer fund, you know, that we have issues there. And one of the items that you talked about was the twenty five, twenty six, um, the seventy thousand dollars for the sewer master plan. How old is the plan that we have and what would be a downside to putting that? Off a little bit longer. It's just a curiosity. I'm not asking that you do that, but.
Sure, um, that's the renewal replacement. So we do not have a renewal replacement master plan for sewer. And this is not an update to the cap, um, capacity master plan that was done in twenty ten. Uh, that, that one still is holding well. Uh, this is just the aging of the lift stations, uh, needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering with the sewer and the water rates, um, is there any kind of assessment? You know, we have a, a contractor that kind of does a study for us. Like a review of what other agencies have done or options that other agencies have used to kind of help and offset some of those costs or. And how they've kind of approached it when it, cause it seems like we're going to continue facing this problem, you know, in the future. Has it been? Does the contractor look at that? See what other agencies do?
Um, well, they, well, they do provide, cause they, they've done other cities, right? He provided the other cities that they looked at for what their rates are. He's also works with other cities. Um, he's not a, a budget person. What they do is they do, uh, a financial plan so that you're meeting the rates, but it's also a due diligence that you're not supposed to be. Exceeding or overly charging, right? We're not supposed to be making absorbent amounts of money on, um, these types of enterprise funds per state statute. So, um, as far as best practices for, um, water and sewer and expenditure. Red reductions, I think is what you were kind of asking at what other cities are doing. Um. Unfortunately, a lot of our costs for the expenses specifically for sewer, both water and sewer. But specifically sewer are just treatment costs. So we, we have no leverage there. So I guess if we don't send them sewer. We could decrease the cost, but even then it's, it's just the cost of treatment. So, um, there's not much to defer in order to save costs.
And there's no other options, right, to the treatment?
I, I will, I will add too, that the conversation typically good boils down to. Um, you know, the rates are one lever, your reserves are another, you know, potential pool to soften the rate changes. And then what, what is your, um, what are your planned capital projects? So those are typically the three sort of variables you can work with. And you see different, um, from a policy perspective and different jurisdictions, different enterprises, they'll operate them a little differently. Sometimes you'll. You'll see a city just, you know, jack the rates up all in one year because they don't want to deal with using reserves. You see some of our peer agencies are. Burning through reserves alarmingly fast that they haven't addressed yet, um, you know, but they're going to have to address, you know, and so we've. We've, um, o- over a period of years, it's been five, five years now, I think we've projected this low point. And we've been, um, incrementally bringing, you know, changing rates, trying to control costs and using some reserves to. You know, and, and not getting over. And using some reserves to, you know, and, and not getting over, not going to, um, aside from some critical capital projects that we did. Like the Cypress or the West Sierra Sewer Replacement and some Cypress repairs prior to the paving. We've been um, kind of judicial about, or judicious about how we've been using our capital money. To, to try to ideally have a soft landing and then head back up.
And then we will be getting quarterly updates also on sewer and water with the budget.
Absolutely. Yes, that'll be a part of our financial updates going forward as well as our red light, green light fiscal.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I had one more question. Um, you had mentioned about the, the, the police MOU and salaries or you mentioned something along that line. Uh, I know it's unrelated, well, it's not in this item, but the CEA, it looked like they had a five year that expired this year. Is that, are those salaries kind of included or some estimates in the budget?
So for the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we do have some um, minor estimates in there. However, significant changes from those would again be a part of that item. They would come at, with that item to be amended with the budget with that, uh, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My recollection is that we don't really have any kind of place to um, help with changing the movement on the sewer treatment stuff. I, on the water, with the water agency, we have a water advisory committee and, and I know that um, that um, we participate in the finances for that and, and are pretty, pretty active in that. But my recollection is we don't have such a thing for sewer that it, it is what it is. It's like, is that, am I wrong?
The subregional system, um, they have a, a reserve that gets built. Uh, in the past, they used to uh, project what the needs would be. And then if, if, if the um, it, it's revenue or the, you know, from the agencies was higher than the actual expenses. They would refund that money to all the partners. And that was seen to be a lot of effort and necessary effort. So they just kept a, a, a table every year um, to keep track of the reserves. And what's fortunate for us is that um, our, our reserve is starting to build in that internal accounting. So we can use that to moderate our rates moving forward. And I think this year, um, on the subregional system, we had like one and a half, maybe a, a one and a half percent increase. Which was, helped us quite a bit because that's pretty moderate.
It's, and, and it's owned and operated by Santa Rosa, so they, they go through the BPU uh, on, you know, but we're just partners. All the other cities that are, um, that, that um, supply wastewater to it. So there's a TAC, like a staff level TAC, but the actual, there is, yeah. But, but the BPU is the Santa Rosa, cause the Santa Rosa facility that we're just partners to.
So it's only Santa Rosa that, that dictates. You know what I'm thinking is, you know, um, I know Craig, you are very, very active with the WAC. And, and the budgets for Sonoma Water. And it just didn't feel like, you know, where, where is it, you know, that we can kind of say, hey, these are increasing at a rate. That, you know, is not sus, we don't have a place to go to say, hey, you know, timeout, can we kind of negotiate some of these things?
I think they, I think that message from, from all the different cities.
Okay.
They, they do get that message. But you know, it's like I said, it's run and operated by Santa Rosa. And so that's sort of, it, it's like, it's kind of like having a conversation with the water agency. Where they negotiate all of their stuff over here and they just say, well, these are the new costs. And you go, okay. You know, there's not a lot of leverage you have over that, other than, you know, timing of capital projects and using reserves and things like that, that Craig had mentioned.
So in, just from my own education, so in this, this TAC with the um, Santa Rosa. Do we, do you discuss like the timing of capital projects to kind of help?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We, we meet regularly throughout the year, just like the WAC TAC on the water side. And we receive presentations on uh, their capital program. And um, and then we, we provide input on, um, on all of that information.
Thank you. We just don't ever, you know, I think we hear a lot more about the water. And it's just like, the sewer is just like this pipe that goes out and here, pay me. Thank you.
Um, one quick clarification, one of your slides. Water maintains a reserve of thirty-three percent, sewer deficit at twenty-three percent. Did you really just mean that this, the reserve is at twenty-three percent? Which is below our mandated.
Bandated thirty-three, yes.
There's not actually a deficit in the sewer.
There's not a deficit, well, there is a deficit in the capital.
Yes.
Land.
Right.
Not a deficit in the operations.
Got it.
It is just not meeting the thirty-three percent.
Got it, thank you. So I, can you make sure I'm correct on this? I assume that Santa Rosa has to offer, operate their wastewater treatment plan under the same constraints that we operate our water and sewer. That is, they can't make a profit off of it. And presumably there's some controls to make sure they're charging the same rate to their own. Uh, you know, the volumetric rate for treatment is the same for their own uh, water treatment customers. As it is for us. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. It's, it's based on the, the sewage generated by each of the agencies.
Right.
And if, if Santa Rosa's goes up their, their rate, um, they have, they're responsible for paying more of the bill.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make it clear, Santa Rosa can't use their water treatment plan as a profit generator off of us. Okay, thank you.
I just, I just wonder if, I checked their website and I don't see anything like reports or anything. Do they have, the centers have like facility treatment reports or anything that they put out?
Yes, they have a, a capital improvement program and a budget and it's all very transparent and goes to the BPU and, and to their council.
I think I probably was looking at the wrong page or something. Thank you.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, they have, they have a pretty extensive permit regime that they report on regularly. So that's all out there. Sure, you know, if you, the council's interested, we can find the links.
It's also an interesting tour, if you've never done the tour. The guy who used to run it would take a drink from the pipe at the end, but the, the, the new person doesn't do that. I don't recommend it. Okay, so we'll open this for public comment now. So uh, anybody wishing to comment on the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven budgets? Uh, anybody in the chambers wishing to comment? Okay, we'll check with Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Hi, um, first Kevin, there, there's no YouTube um, on city that we're live for the city council meeting. I wanted to mention that. I'm on Zoom and it's okay. Um, there's no room in this budget for anything emergency to happen. Um, and it, we're not going to have a senior center, we're not going to have any new growth at all. Even it, and it looks like we're heading into a collision course in like next two or three years. When those lines cross and go up. Anyway, um, I, and I, from what I could tell, we've been running at like a deficit of two million. Taking out of reserves and everything. I did start college as an accountcy major. I wanted to be an accountant. That was a long time ago. But this, we need to really plan about what's going to happen. Because there's going to be so much that's going to be neglected. Um, there's not going to be any new services. There's not going to be, the, uh, there's only few services. You guys can't cut things because they're, you don't give them like, they just cut. And the pools that run a park, it, they have three and they cut um, one for the summer. There's not anything that really, there's no leeway. And that really, um, I think you need to really start talking about insolvency in the future. The debt services, it's gone up from very low to now, it's uh, like a mil, I don't know, million. But it's, we used to not have this debt service too. So a lot of our, um, what should be used on current stuff, we're paying off debt. And so anyway, this has been a long meeting, um, as far as listening to all this. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
There are no further hands on Zoom. Mayor Ford, that will end public comment.
All right, back to council for discussion and decision, discussion. All right, um, on, on the question of the debt service. Um, I looked back at the interest rates, which aren't in your slides but are in the staff report. And it's two point four, five and three point something. And those look a lot better than what we'd be paying if we were still, you know, we'd be paying six point eight percent if it was still in CalPERS. So that is turning out to be a really good decision back then. Um, thank you for pulling all that together. Yes.
And Angela, would you um, address the concern about um, emergencies? My best understanding is that is why we have a dedicated reserve policy.
Absolutely, yes. That's why we have our reserve policy. That's why we are required for that policy to have that twenty-five percent, which then gives us, that is, you know, three months of operations. With no new revenues. So that's based on having that fund balance available for three months of operations in case of an emergency. So that's what that is based on.
Thanks. Um, I would say, you know, the, the, the trends do worry all of us. And so, and I agree with the commenter that there's very little fat in the budget to cut. So it's uh, it's a little worrying. So, uh, yeah, keep looking for new revenue sources. Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, the sewer one concerns me and all we really can do is really watch that. It, it, I know we struggled when we did our rate increase recently. And it's sort of that balancing point, you know, how, how much do you raise things at once to cover? You know, and, and it's, it's tough sometimes. And we're kind of like skating along, trying to get it up, going in the right direction. But, you know, we did pass some significant rate increases for that. And, and it's just, again, hard to um, not want to make that all up at once. And, you know, say, hey, here's, like some of the other cities are doing, here's a twenty or twenty-five percent rate increase. So kind of feathering, if you will, that in. I, I think we're, we're trying to walk that fine line, I feel like. But the sewer does concern me.
Anything else?
Did we complete or are we looking at a project that was going to reduce stormwater out into the sewage water? So we weren't sending as much to Santa Rosa? Was that something we've completed or something that's still on the books or?
That's a, a good way to characterize that is, it's programmatic in our CIP. We have a systematic way of addressing that over time. You know, it's not something we can just.
Not a program that starts at this stage.
All at one time. It's, it's going to be a gradual process. It's sealing up leaky manholes, it's repairing the gusher uh, joints that are offset.
Type of stuff.
And so forth. So we, we have the plan for that. Um, about five or six years ago, we, we videotaped the, the deep sewers. And the ones that we suspected were the, the worst culprits to that. And um, it's, it's given us a list of projects that are good for five or six years.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Are we seeing some benefit from that or is it kind of just minimal and, and not as, as noticeable?
We, uh, we had kind of discussed this briefly at a prior meeting. It's really difficult to quantify it.
Okay.
But um, it's sort of in, industry practice where everybody's doing it. So if we're not keeping track of our own pipes and maintaining them, we're going to fall behind and get incrementally higher.
Okay, thank you.
Costs.
That's my recovery.
Uh, as a follow-on to that, do we have a set, um, policy is probably not the right word. Um, timeline for how often we um, do look at those pipes? You know, do that, that viewing of that pipe, you know, say every, I don't know, ten years or something like that. So we can kind of see what's holding up, what's, you know, starting to deteriorate.
Trying to understand the question. It's, it's something we, we're, we're ahead of right now. We've, we've, we've videotaped sufficient number of pipes that we have our work cut out for us and, and not enough budget to address them. Once we get through that inventory, that backlog, we would then go out. There's another um, grouping of pipes that we haven't videotaped. That would be the next level. But when we first did the study, um, the consultant and, and staff strategized. Like what was the lowest hanging fruit? What would, um, were big, where would we get the biggest bang for the buck? And so that's what we're addressing now. And um, the next level, it would be a little more difficult to get to that, that savings. Um, so the deeper pipes, the pipes that are old have likely to have a lot of fractures in them and so forth. Those are the ones we're getting at today.
It just seems like we should have some kind of a best practice so that we kind of stay on top of that. So that we don't end up with, as you put it, gushers.
Anything else? Okay, anybody wishing to move the resolution on page three hundred or?
Okay, I um, moved that we adopt a resolution approving the City of Kattati budget for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And twenty-six, twenty-seven and authorize the Meritus Line, a letter requesting acceptance into the PG and E fleet EV program.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that carries five to nothing. Thank you, and that brings us to the city managers' report.
All right, well, congratulations. There's a lot of work to get to that.
Yes, congratulations, our first two-year adopt, uh, two-years budget adopted.
Yes, thank you. Um, all right, so just some updates, the Putnam Park construction's ongoing. I think I mentioned earlier that we thought it might be done by mid-June. Probably not going to be on that, um, on that date, but we're hoping to get it wrapped up as soon as possible, hopefully in July. So we're, I know our people are working with the contractor to keep it on track. Um, if you've been out there recently, you'll see that most dog park, most of the dog park fence posts have been installed. As well as the concrete curb for the rear field that's out there. Um, tree protection measures continue to be an active discussion out there. Um, to try to ensure that the sycamores at the front of the park and the redwoods at the back of the park remain healthy post-construction. During construction and of course, post-construction. Um, this includes general avoidance of the, of cutting large roots and mitigation measures when one needs to get cut. Adjusting some of the, um, some of the design work, like the hardscape has been adjusted a little bit to try to do some avoidance, root avoidance. Um, exclusion fencing has been put up in some places and so forth. So that's, anyway, that's an ongoing conversation if you hear from anyone in the community about it. Um, the annual paving maintenance project is essentially complete. This is the, the most visible part is the East Kattati part. But it also includes, as um, you all know from tonight, um, with the, with the change orders. New uh, speed control measures on Benson, um, fog lines and reflectors on the asphalt dikes on West School Street. And then, um, and as well as refreshed striped peanut maple, where maple and school come together. Uh, Sunflower Park is currently out to bid and if we receive good bids, we plan to bring this to city council on July eighth. So that's coming soon, hopefully. Um, we're also in design of the street rehab project. This is the one that we had discussed at the council, um, about the scope of that work. Um, that design is underway. And um, the work that it includes, just for everyone's knowledge, is the remainder of East Kattati Avenue. So East Kattati Avenue currently the, the pavement maintenance work starts, or I should say stops at Baytree Court. But it's going to continue all the way to the city limits is what the second phase is going to do. Um, and then it's um, it's also, as the name implies, street rehab. So it's going to include some reconstruction, so Lasker Lane, uh, Lund Hill and potentially Oretzky if there's budget. So getting to some of these failed roads, um, chipping away at them each year as long, in addition to the maintenance work that we did already that we're just finished up. Um, just an interesting little fact, I, actually I was going to mention it earlier when we were talking about the um, the zoning ordinance to merge the two. You know, the CI and the IG zones is um, from a, uh, just a little factoid from a sales tax perspective. That part of town is the most, is the most productive section of the city. And, and that even excludes, you know, um, the business park, Lowe's, all that, that's not included in that. But just the, just those low-key discreet businesses that you probably mostly never hear about, they're the ones that um, actually generate. From all the eight different areas of town, that's the most effective. So it's, um, anyway, it's good to see that. So it's, anyway, it's good to see that merger happen and maybe open up more opportunities and continue to, you know, to, I guess, put the, you know, foot on the pedal for, you know, opportunities out there to hopefully continue to drive its success. We also have, I'm expecting this in August, but we've been working on an update to development impact fees. The primary, that gets the headline, is the moving, you know, by moving it from unit to square footage based. But there's also some other, you know, some other things. That's, we should see that in August. As I mentioned before, we're also, this is on a slower, slower burn, but we have the Catati Village one and two affordable housing agreements. That developer is not planning to build this year, so it's a little bit on a slower track, but that's out there. That would be of interest. Flee Haven Estates, they still seem to be pretty motivated to maybe even get into construction this summer. So that's the development that's out on Old River Highway, opposite Eucalyptus. The one twenty East Catati Avenue Affordable, our joint project with Robin Zemblar, that's also moving along. The, the thing that, the one action that the council is going to have to consider is the development agreement. And in conversations, in, in all these conversations, we're going to, we're going to be having the development impact fee conversation first. Then we're going to have that conversation second. And that's largely, the schedule there is driven in large part by grant cycles. And so that's not urgent this summer. And then we're going to have a community meeting later in June here for the transit oriented community zoning. That's, you know, when we did the Santeras Way specific plan zoning update, we also did the sequel work for these, it's essentially East Catati Avenue, that corridor there. And the zoning changes related to it being close to a train station. So that, the community meeting is going to be later this month. And then we'll shortly after that see in ordinance come to planning commission and to councils. That's also in the near term. This Friday, June thirteenth is our first free movie in the park. We're showing Toy Story in La Plaza Park. And that's going to be approximately eight fifteen when the sun's down. We also have two more movies this season that'll, one will be during National Night Out. And then the other, that's August fifth. And the other one's going to happen during Grub and the Hub, which will be in September, September twentieth. And so three movies this summer. And then we have Camp Catati that started this week. It's been great. The community center is still there. It wasn't burned down, so that's a good start to the, to the camps. And we also are starting a pilot program for the box. It's like a CSA box program from the ranch. So you might have seen some social media activity on that, but they're, they're starting just fruits, vegetables, eggs, that kind of thing in a, like in a farm box. Farmer's Market started last week. It was the first, it was the first week of that. It's four thirty to seven thirty in La Plaza Park. And just, it'll continue through the end of September. I think we talked about the pride themed market is going to be on June eighteenth, given this is pride month. And then we have our thirty second annual Catati Kids Day Parade and Festival on Saturday, July twelfth. And this year's theme is dynamite Catati. Anyway, I won't get into that. So this, there'll be a free breakfast at Church of the Oaks. And, and then we have a parade at ten AM and all the normal great stuff at the Kids' Day event. And, oh, one other thing I'll just mention, June twenty first is the Music Fest. That's being run by the, by our Chamber of Commerce. So that's also just right around the corner. I know they're looking for volunteers. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Okay, let's do city council member reports. Start at this end this time. Councilmember Savage.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank city staff and everyone who attended the pride flag raising ceremony last week. I thought we had a real nice crowd, almost 20 people. And it went real well. I did attend the Rona Park and Santa Rosa flag raising ceremonies as well, just to kind of benchmark and see. And us at Rona Park are the only two that have city officials and proclamation and council members at the raising. So I thought that was, was good. And I'm giving the fruit or the vegetable basket from the farm. So that's interesting to see. I think they're doing a real good job. And I look forward to see how it develops throughout the summer.
Yes, so May thirtieth, I went to the Bay Area Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. And it was a NAPA. It included elected and appointed officials from the nine county Bay Area regions. And the Balaio, it's called Balaio, it's like Nalaio, which is the National Association of, of Latino Elected Officials. So that was a really good meeting. I have notes if anyone's interested in what was covered at the meeting. They also had an award ceremony in evening where some, council member Samantha Rodriguez received Emerging Leader Award. And then Herman G. Hernandez received an award as well. On June sixth, I went to Sonoma Clean Power Meeting. And the most significant item was the approval to begin the, the consideration, which is a sixty day waiting period for the expansion to an offer service to Lake County, Clear Lake and Lakeport. And also I was appointed to a group working with Sonoma Clean Power and their consultant on tribal relations. June tenth, I went to Catati Chamber of Commerce meeting earlier today. And June twenty first is the Catati Music Fest and looking for volunteers. And I know that they just emailed to everyone's email, the signup for the volunteers for June twenty first. Also there, next year, there, there was a report about an SSU dorm cleanup that happened this year. So there are some people from the chamber that go to Sonoma State. So next year we might be able to volunteer for that. And they clear out the dorms with the students when they leave. And they collected eight hundred pounds of food to donate from the students, things that they leave. And also more than two thousand five hundred pounds of non-food, which is clothing and other type of equipment, refrigerators and everything. So most of the things, some people just either, they just leave like new refrigerators because they're moving across the country to a new school or something. So just all kinds of, you know, things that they have in their dorm. They were donated mostly to United Sewerable Policy, UCP and nonprofit Rona Park. So those, some of the things that they talked about at the meeting. So that's what I have on my schedule. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'll just continue down the line. I just have two things. One was I was at the pride flag raising and that was a great event. You two did a great job putting it together and staff, thank you. The night before that, I spoke at an event at Ner Shalom synagogue in town. That was a community event that they invited me to welcome people as mayor. That was a event in support of trans people and the current environment. And it's a great panel. I just welcomed people to Catati. And that's all I've got.
Okay, last week I attended the LAFCO meeting and it's budget season. So we passed our budget. And the other item that was on the agenda was the election of officers. And Mark Hemmendinger, that is associated with the Rancho Adobe Fire District, was made the chair and I was nominated as vice chair. So Catati presence at LAFCO. And then Monday, I was at the SCTA, SCTCA. I'm, it's going to take me forever to get that. Of note is that we had a really good presentation on the transportation demand management plan. And that was really very interesting. They gave a whole lot of kind of existing statistics, like seventy percent of the people drive alone. And ninety percent of the trips in Sonoma County are within Sonoma County. And sixty percent are less than five miles. So it's kind of looking at that and, you know, what are the things that, that we can do to, to kind of change some of that? So they're looking at raising awareness of the plan and things that they can do. They're trying to look maybe at some parking pricing. But there was a little bit of a discussion on that. You know, some of that could be viewed negatively from an equity perspective. So who knows where that will go. One of the things that caught my eye was coordinating and collaborating with others for that first last mile around shuttles, VAM pools and transportation network companies. And so I happened to sit next to Gerard, who's the mayor of Rona Park. So maybe with that MOU that we have, maybe there's something that we can put together from a SSU, Rona Park, Catati, to kind of look into some kind of shuttle or something like that that can, can go through all of ours. But they're kind of trying to work through that, but it sounds like it's going to be a long process because there's not a whole lot of low hanging fruit there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
I have nothing to report that hasn't already been reported on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so, let's see, that brings us to information received after the agenda was posted.
Yes, there were some minor corrections to some of the pages in the budget provided by Director Quarter. So those are available here in print in the chamber tonight and will be uploaded to the agenda tomorrow. Thank you. As well as the Zoom recording for YouTube. I apologize to the previous commenter. Thank you for letting me know about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned at nine oh one.